Think you need to get your mic on.
Uh, when I stand over there, well.
Oh, okay. Okay, you're tall.
Good morning. Like to welcome everyone here this morning. Thank you for coming, braving the weather out there. If you would, please join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will yield to Commissioner Boyce.
Well, thank you. Just a quick update on law enforcement officers lost in the line of duty throughout the United States. It's up to nine. Four of those have been by gunfire. So, Mr. Chair, if we may, just have a moment of silence. Thank you. Thanks again. Also, I wanted to, gives me a great privilege and honor to welcome Julie Smeltzer. We were with a group last night and someone said, "How in the world did you folks pull that off?" And I said, "Well, it certainly wasn't the money." Welcome. And, you know, I told a friend a few days ago, just by virtue of you being here, the barriers to problem solving and solutions are coming down. And I just want to give you a real proper welcome and thank the board for letting me express that. Third thing, Curry County prevailed again in another lawsuit. And it's just part of the, part of the Curry County comeback. I suspect details will be in the paper and I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right. Do you have any changes to the amendment? Or amendments to the agenda? I'm sorry.
None for me, Mr. Chair.
None for me.
Okay. I think we need to add one and it'll be, and we're gonna need to have an executive session per ORS 192660. Counsel, could you?
Oh, thank you. That is also 2D, and that is to confer with designated representatives for labor negotiations. And so we'll do that near the end and we'll seek direction and there won't be any decision made, really.
Okay. All right. So can I have a motion?
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further comments or questions? A question?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right. And we'll start with public comments. First of all, let me, I need to address everyone. Let me welcome and also, and for the record, Julie Smeltzer as Operations Director, Commissioner Boyce, Commissioner Gold, Counsel Huddle, JJ, and myself, Christopher Pash. Ms. Mary Rowe.
I am Mary Rowe. I would like to ask that you consider removing the 30-minute limit for public comments at future meetings and that you allow citizens' input at workshops because listening to citizen input on a project, by the time it gets to the BOC meeting, is often too late to make a difference. Sometimes an ordinance has already been drawn up. I would like to make a suggestion about the issue of lack of accessibility to information about County Board of Commissioner meetings for those who cannot use a computer due to disability or age. There are so many citizens in Curry County who cannot use a computer. I am one, due to my physical disability. And the director of one of the two food banks in Gold Beach, who is a senior citizen, does not email. I have a friend who does not use a computer due to being developmentally disabled, but she can read. And I know many other older people who do not use computers. I have been told that in former years, copies of the informational packet about county BOC meetings, as well as the minutes, were printed out and given to the four libraries in our county. Each library hung up this information for citizens to view, and so did the county BOC office. Citizens could also make copies. We could do this now by emailing it to libraries and asking them to print it out and providing a copy to view at the BOC office. I would also like you to provide animal control in our county. We need an animal control officer. The Sheriff's Department has not been able to afford one, and Wild Rivers Animal Rescue is concerned with liability. What is needed is a partnership between the two and perhaps a reliable vehicle for this purpose. Training may also be necessary. I would ask if one of you would meet with Tanya, the director of Wild Rivers Animal Rescue, and our sheriff, and work out a plan that both can live with. Our citizens and animals are entitled to this service. It is a public safety issue, and to not assist animals who are suffering greatly is irresponsible, cruel, and scandalous. Thank you.
I want to say, as you know, I've spoken with you about the animal control issue, and I have spoken to Sheriff Ward. I think his involvement would be if you had an animal that was out of control and/or someone protecting, a person protecting that animal. He, that's at the level that he would get involved. I do think we need to have some kind of animal control, and it is something that I'd like to get involved with.
Thank you.
So that we can do something about it. I would like to say, I'd like to probably say that we can get to this probably in March. We've got a pretty full agenda for the next few weeks. But I would be interested in looking at, you know, finding a vehicle. We are searching for a couple of vehicles right now for different departments and having someone that can pick up some of the slack with that.
Thank you so much, Chair, and Pash.
Josh Hopkins? All righty. We'll move it to Agenda Item 7 then. Mr. Barnes, I think you have one for there as well, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Mr. Barnes, you have one for public comment?
Good morning, David Barnes. I read Commissioner Boyce's piece this morning in ePilot about wildfires, and wildfire season is coming up again. And I just want to, I've read through the last week or two. I've been looking through the last year's Omnibus Bill and the Farm Act. And there's funding available for a lot of the things that we need to do as a county to help us prevent mega fires in the future. The Omnibus Bill provides for a change in the way forest fires are fought generally. You know, people have stood up. They have noticed what's happened here in the last couple of years in our county. Senator Wyden has put something forth that he, with another senator from Idaho, and it's gotten signatures. And basically, it changes everything. But one of the, one of the key elements before we can get funding, federal funding, to do these things is having an up-to-date community wildlife wildfire protection plan. And Curry County put one together back in February of 2008. Next month, it'll be 11 years old. It hasn't been updated. One of the elements is the plan must be within five years. I'd really like, I guess what I'd like is for this committee to ask, to have JJ put out a posting that you are looking for volunteers to come in and to do an update of this fire, of this wildlife wildfire protection plan. That way, we can go out, we could, we'd be eligible for money. You know, there are a lot of what they say in this Omnibus Bill and in Wyden's Bill is that the money is going to be spent on local labor to solve local problems. And, you know, that's one thing that we desperately use around Curry is more well-paying jobs for people. So, you know, like I said, I just, that would be my request, is that you ask to impotulate a new commission to get together and to update this wildlife wildfire protection plan. I've read through it, not word for word, but it's an amazing document, incredibly thorough. And to see it just not be acted on is just really a shame to me. So, that was it. Thank you.
What I would like to say to you is Commissioner Boyce and I have been very active with, we started, we were in the development of Curry wildfire prevention. And Commissioner Rhodes was part of that group that put that bill together. We've also conferred with him. I would love to see that go forward. I don't know, comments from the rest of the board, but I would love to see a group put together to further that.
Mr. Barnes, if I may, Mr. Chair, thank you. You mentioned, you know, local labor. That's something that we did get from Senator Merkley yesterday. He highlighted that. I think through the Farm Bill, even though there's obviously some distance between the President, who has got a little bit of say where that money goes and how that might affect Oregon, Merkley is working on that. And through also Curry wildfire prevention, but there are some efforts there. The 2008 plan, even though it is 11 years old, it is still very pertinent to what we have here. And I mentioned, I have a copy of that on my desk, and I think that reminder, that challenge is something we can get right on. That'll probably go through, excuse me, Curry County Emergency Management. And your suggestion that we look for volunteers is equally notable. Thank you.
You know, I just, the point, it is very pertinent. It's an amazing plan. I've read all 168 pages of it. The people who did this, Lucy Labonte and the others who put this together, did an amazing and thorough job on it, you know. It's still pertinent. It doesn't, I don't think it's going to require much, but if we want to act on it, we need to update it. So.
And Jeremy Dumeier, I don't want to misquote him here, but I think my understanding was through Title III funds, might only take $5,000. I know that's a lot of money, but still, in the interest of 160-page document, that is a reasonable amount and might be all that's required to update it, especially with what's happened to Curry County related to wildland fires, catastrophic fires in the last two seasons.
If you're looking for help, you know, I'll volunteer to be on, I'll volunteer to be on the board. I did a Parks Plan and Wildlife Plan back in New Jersey. So, you know, I volunteered. Thank you.
Terrific. Ms. Colstrom?
Louise Colstrom, County Accountant. There is and has been, for quite a while, Title III funds that were tagged to do the wildfire protection plan. And it's with Kuz Forest Protection Association. And they have funds sitting there from Title III money to pay for somebody to write that plan. So.
Thank you.
So that could act, go ahead. Thank you again. That could either come from the Sheriff's Department or CFPA. Do you think that?
That we have funds to pay CFPA to do that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I'd like to move forward with that, then.
Sooner the better.
Sooner the better. Thanks. Dale Hodges?
Hey.
Good morning.
Morning to you. I read the thing in the paper today, too. And one thing that's missing is a near-term plan in light of the bullet that we dodged last year in terms of the lobster fire. I don't think it's an opinion. I think it's pretty much a fact that the lobster fire was the first incident of the season. And that enabled us to have all that aircraft available at a heartbeat. I dare say, two weeks later, and that aircraft wouldn't have been available, and who knows what in terms of Gold Beach, because that wind was coming this way. So, I just didn't want to have that great piece of work go without what is, to me, sorely missing in terms of a near-term solution for the wildland interface, where structures meet the timberlands. In a house, every house has a thing called a Zone 6.7, right in between the timberlands and the house. There's a bunch of zones. I'd suggest that residents hydrate that zone right around their house and go ahead and inoculate it with whatever you can, including the duff. And I've got three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I recommend people hydrate, excuse me, put a bio soil around their land in that Zone 7. If you're, if you have a one-bedroom house, your Zone 7 might only be 200 feet from the house. If you've got a big cornerstone ranch, that Zone 7 is going to be huge. So, what I'm trying to say is take all the biomass or all the slash from anything in your property and hydrate it so that when the fire comes, it runs into this water barrier. Fire operates a lot like water. It'll go around anything it resists. So hydrate the ground around it. Now, in terms of this timber idea, every time we cut a new road, we create a new edge for the, that is very hospitable to fires, because that edge is very drying. The plan that was cited earlier may not be effective because we have a new kind of fire. The fire's propagating underground because of the droughts. The ground is very dry, and the land is preheated before the flames get there. And so by, excuse me for pointing, but I am, uh...
Love your passion. You know what you're talking about.
We've talked about this before. That edge that that road creates is actually just a new kind of fuel. That's what I needed to say. It's just a different kind of fuel. It's not really a solution in terms of firefighting. Getting your timber out there, well, you've been doing that for generations. I don't know about that, how that's, how that's holding up for us. That's my clear-cut statement. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir.
All righty.
If you're gonna be around for Commissioner comments, Mr. Hodges, I'm gonna speak a little bit about soils and roads and some of the solutions that are presented in that article today. And some of the discussions we've had, I think you and I have far more agreements than disagreements. Your comment about roads, I would like to speak to that later on. I think there's some good and bad issues there. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Next, we're gonna have a presentation from Josephine County Commissioner DeYoung on Law Enforcement Stability.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I went to County College with this, yeah.
Court, go ahead.
Well, I just, I...
Court always has something to say, so let's let him get it off his chest.
Just what it relates to my, my good friend from Josephine County. You know, Curry County's broke, and he's been very kind to donate sport coats to me, you know, because of our resource issues. So, I'm very glad you're here. And first time I met you, I thought this guy's a leader. He's a non-politician, and I've just really appreciated getting to know you. And thanks for coming here. We had you on the phone once before, I think, on a phone conference for a different issue. And I know you're, you just finished your second year, and thanks for making the trip over here. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, well, the pleasure's all mine, and I appreciate the opportunity. What I'm here to talk about today is the Law Enforcement Stability Act. It is a House Bill 2382. Just some history on it. When Measure 91 was passed, Josephine County was at the height of probably its, hey, we don't have any money. We don't, you know, we didn't have a Sheriff's Department. We had zero law enforcement to take care of all the nuances that the upstart marijuana industry was going to bring to our area. We had an awful lot of growers move into Josephine County, first because it grows really well there. We've got a, we've got a fantastic growing season. But a lot of it was because we had no law enforcement. We have just some history on it. Josephine County and Jackson County are probably the two biggest marijuana producers in the state of Oregon. Forty percent of the legal marijuana in the system comes from Jackson and Josephine County. And 80% of what we grow locally in Jackson and Josephine County goes into the black market. So there's a huge gaposis there. I, when I ran two years ago, I ran on the fact that, that, you know, I wanted to wait and see how the marijuana thing was gonna shake out, because it was a, it's an upstart industry on the legal side. Been in Josephine County. I watched the first busload come through in probably 1968 and move out into the Takilma area. And that's when marijuana was introduced to Josephine County. Till then, it was, we were beer drinkers. And after that, when I came back out of the Navy in 1972, a lot of my friends were smoking pot, and I never went down that road because I still liked beer. So, anyway, what we found ourselves with in Josephine County and Jackson County had a slight shortfall, but Josephine County especially, we had a problem with law enforcement and from the side of our Josephine County Sheriff's Department. We were unable to respond to the complaints from neighbors that had marijuana grows next to them. We were, we were even unable to respond to growers that were getting their crops stolen from them. And we had a pretty severe element move into the valley that we couldn't, we couldn't take care of. The state answered back last year, and I had a bill, and it wasn't really a bill, it was more of a concept. It was called the Southern Oregon Marijuana Initiative. And what it amounted to is that we ran the numbers on why don't we have the money for adequate law enforcement? And it was because the Secure Real Schools Act went away, and also our timber receipts all went away. And we went back to the Secure Real School Act in 2008, and we said, if your general fund was reduced when the school, SRS fund stopped, if your general fund was reduced by 40%, you became what we called a distressed county. There was five counties that were involved in that. It was Kuz, Curry, Jackson, Josephine, and Douglas County. We all lost 40% of our general fund, which basically is what, what funds law enforcement. So why do we fill that void? So we came up with the Southern Oregon Marijuana Initiative. And basically, you were not allowed to state during all of their lawmaking, said you're not allowed to tax marijuana. Only the state can tax marijuana. So we came up with an idea, and it was myself, Counsel for the Association of Oregon Counties, Rob Ovett, and David Brock Smith, sat in a room, Representative Smith. And we came up with, basically, the Southern Oregon Marijuana Initiative, which said, should the counties be able to tax, put a business license fee on the production of marijuana? And we kinda had to wait around to see what the, what the state was going to do as far as their unit of measure. They ended up coming to ground with, on the recreational side, their unit of measure that they charge in their application for licensing is square foot of canopy on the recreational side. Over on the medical side is per plant. You apply for, I'm gonna have so many plants, mature plants, and so that's what you, what they would pay into the marijuana taxation system. In 2017, the state collected $115 million in marijuana licensing fees. And you would think if 40% of the product came out of Jackson and Josephine County, we'd get 40% of the revenue, and that would solve our problem. But that didn't happen. It's all split up by population, very much like OLCC and liquor, and the liquor taxes. So that left Josephine County, which has 80, roughly 83, 87,000 people. That left us with absolutely a hole. It, I think we got 800,000 that first year was about it. So that didn't do, that helped us, but it didn't really do what we, what we really needed to do. What needed to be done is we needed a full-blown Sheriff's Department like we used to have. And in order to basically fill this void, if you ask OLCC, they're only gonna take care of their legal grows, and the Oregon Health Authority's only gonna take care of their legal growth. What do we do about the black market in the, in the middle? We've asked this of the US Attorney Billy Wayans. We've asked it of the governor. We've asked it of state police. We've asked it of everybody. They said, well, that's local law enforcement. That's what you're, that's your charge right there. So we didn't have the money to do that. So how are we gonna do this? So, between David Brock Smith and myself and Rob Ovett, Counsel Rob Ovett, we came up with, and what is now House Bill 2382. And basically, what it amounts to, the short, the short version is just a one-pager, and I've given one to all the commissioners. And Ms. Melter will make sure that this thing is available, so you can read the whole thing. Say it's just a one-pager. And basically, what it amounts to is that it allows, we are asking the legislature to allow these five counties to charge a business license fee at the time of registration. So if a marijuana grower wants to register his grow, say he's a recreational grower, and he wants to apply for 40,000 square feet of canopy, which is not out of the ordinary in Josephine County, this bill would allow us to charge some, anywhere up to $1 a square foot business license for that grow. So if you have a 40,000 square foot application, and it's what we land on $1, guess what? It's a $40,000 business license fee. On the OMMP side, it would go $50 a plant. That's the maximum. We had to cap that at $50 a plant, assuming that it's about seven and a half feet by seven and a half feet to grow a plant. So we came at $50. And so basically, that's what the cap is. And if you said, I'm gonna have 48, say you have 48 mature plants in your ask, that's $2,400 a year. And that goes directly to the, it's, it's not done and mixed and then collectively redistributed. It's by where the plant is grown itself. And the timber industry, it's on the stump. Wherever that is, that plant comes out of the ground, that's the recipient of those funds. So, when we did that, we had some hurdles. First off, the first one, when we had the Marijuana Initiative, first off, it was aimed at the marijuana industry, and I don't think that's fair. This thing is not, and they say, well, you, you know, you just don't like marijuana. Well, I've got mixed emotions on it. It's here to stay. That ship has sailed that it's never gonna be, that it'll ever be illegal in Oregon again. That ship has sailed. So how do we deal with it going forward? I want to, there was a bumper sticker when Measure 91 was coming out, and it said, legalization, regulation, taxation. When legalization came through with Measure 91, everybody went out and scratched the other two things off their bumper. They didn't want regulation. They didn't want taxation. So now we're into the regulation side of it, and the state also, you know, has some regulations involved. But it does miss that middle ground, which is called the black market, or however you want to call it. It's not legal. And so we want to apply pressure to the illegal side of it. We want to apply some pressure in Josephine County and in all counties. And there are five counties now that are involved. By the way, let me get some back on history. Douglas opted out. And Douglas opted out because they don't have a recreational program in Douglas County. So they opted out, and we thought, oops, that's not a good for our, that isn't good for our, our bill. But as soon as they opted out, Lane County opted in. Now, Lane County's huge. Lane County's got a lot more pull than we ever have down here in Southern Oregon, as we all know. Southern Oregon doesn't really have a very strong voice. We're getting a stronger voice with good leadership. We're getting a stronger voice in Salem. But, but Lane stepping in really helped out. This bill needed to be, it went through legislative, what they call Legislative, LC, which is Legislative Council, to make sure it's constitutional. Is it violating any existing laws? No, it isn't. And so it came out and was issued a bill, House Bill 2382, if you want to follow it as the session unravels. It was sponsored by a Democrat, Arnie Roblin, from up in Kuz County area. And on the Senate side and in the House side, it was sponsored by Representative David Brock Smith. It has a couple more sponsors that have jumped on board on that. We have a lobbyist out of Lane County that's working the halls of Salem. And basically, what it amounts to, like, for instance, in Josephine County, there's some numbers in here in this packet, and the numbers, Ms. Melter has helped work with me very well on this over in the Josephine County side. And she's got some numbers of how it works out for all the counties involved, and what you could expect if this thing were to pass. One of the things that was the difference from last year to this year is we had a couple of our local legislators, they weren't really ready to get on board with this because they didn't know how the people thought. So we put an advisory question on the ballot in Josephine County in November of 18 on the ballot. And the advisory question basically said, should the counties be able to apply a business license fee on the production of marijuana, both medical, both medical and recreational? And that money, in Josephine County, this was ours, was read to say, and that money would go into a law enforcement trust fund. I've had the governor ask me, and I've had the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, state of Oregon, ask me, why a law enforcement trust fund? As if I walk out of this building or any building, and I go run into somebody on the street, and I say, if you were to give your money, you know, how would you want your tax money spent? The first thing out of their mouth is gonna be public safety or law enforcement. And that's what they want to fund first. And that seems to always be the pawn in any, in any ballot measure. It's always the pawn. So we put it in Josephine County. We put it into a law enforcement trust fund. Governor said, why would you do that? And I said, because I don't want to fall into the same trap that we fell into with ONC years ago, where we got all the money and went in the general fund, and before you know it, we're all flying around. The commissioners have an air-conditioned helicopter, and they're going back to Washington. They're spending a lot of money. After I'm gone, long gone, I want to make sure that there's a trust fund that is, that is overseen by a board of trustees, trustees, number one, and number two is the Budget Committee. So you have a double set of hurdles to go. If you're law enforcement, you say, I want some money out of that trust fund, you say, okay, you need to, you need to plead your case to the, both the trustees, the board of trustees, and to the Budget Committee. It can be used for anything. In Josephine County, we have a real lack of court security. Guess what? We'll be able to fund that. We can put school resource officers. In Josephine County, we have junior high kids trading marijuana for homework. We can't have that. And we have no way to, we have no way to enforce that. I am going to, if I, if, if we get to committee, which we're going to get to committee, I'm thinking this is gonna... thinking this is gonna start in the House Revenue Committee, but I'm gonna throw the Oregon State Police and I'm gonna throw Josephine County Sheriff under the bus. Because I'm gonna ask him point blank. I'm gonna say, Sheriff Daniels, in 2018, how many busts did you make? How many illegal grows did you go rip the plants up and put the people in jail that run that? And he's gonna say, none. Same thing with OSP. I think OSP did a couple of them, but, but not very many. And I'm gonna ask him, what did you not know where they were? You couldn't find them? I mean, eighty percent of the grows are illegal and you couldn't find one? No, it's all revenue. They don't have, they don't have the revenue and the staff to go out and physically rip up the plants and arrest the people. The governor asked me, she says, well, what's in it for the state? Well, and that's, the governor's gonna ask the exact same thing. If we can lean on, if the counties, if these five southern counties where most of the marijuana illegally was grown, if we can lean on those illegal grows, I'm hoping it'll push both, they will have enough invested in their growth, they're not just gonna pack up and go away, that it will push them into one of the two state programs and then the state will be able to collect revenue on the normal passage, you know, on the normal, you know, with the normal channels of taxing the actual plant, the product itself. So I'm thinking that's the way we're gonna go on this thing. It's receiving, at first last year, we tried it on the short session, basically it didn't go anywhere. Coos County, I mentioned the advisory question that we put on the ballot, just to let you know, it came back in Josephine County. Our voters, seventy-six, twenty-four, in favor of yes, please do this. Please do it. Coos County put a similar advisory question on their ballot, seventy-one, twenty-nine. So two out of the five counties that put an advisory question on there, their constituents all said, hey, hallelujah, it's about time. Representative Carl Wilson from Josephine County, you know, from the district over there, he was, he's cautious on this. Last year, he did not support it because he's a, he's a good Republican and he doesn't like a tax of any kind. But I said, but the Republicans like law enforcement, so anyway. But this year, he's looking at it again because there's been an awful lot of things change in our, in, in the scope of this thing. We both, he and I both decided, a number of years ago when we were both running, that we had to let this thing run its course for about three or four years to see how it panned out. And this year, I said, okay, you've had your laws come in from the state side, everything, you've got all the money to go into state police in Southern Oregon and all the money, all the money we can get. And the governor put three million dollars in law enforcement, which we got six hundred thousand of in Josephine County, but that's a one-shot deal. It was a grant. It's not stable funding. I want stable funding for law enforcement. I want stable funding for all five of these counties. When Lane got on board, I, that tells me something about Lane County. They have an issue. We all have an issue. I'll tell you some people that do have an issue coming up, and that Douglas County's got an issue, but I don't know whether they recognize it yet. I know that Klamath County, but they don't grow a lot of marijuana over there. But Klamath County's been funding their deputies out of the road fund. And I have an issue with that, so. But anyway, that's, that's other counties. These five counties that are involved in this, and their numbers are here, it depends on how many grows you have applied for from your county, how much money, how much revenue it would mean to you. But if we do it through this means here, what will happen is, is when they apply for their licensing, this will apply, the state will collect the money, the state will give the check back to the county where the, where the marijuana was grown, for their law enforcement. I don't, I'm not ordering you to say where you're gonna spend the money, but I'll tell you what, I was asked to take the law enforcement trust fund out of, out of our program for, for Josephine County. I said, that's where the strength is. The strength is in that, in that, that advisory question. I've been told by seventy-six percent of my constituents that that's where they want the money to go. I'm not gonna deviate from that five inches. I won't do it. So that's where we're at. I think, I appreciate, you know, any support we can get from, from your county commissioners and, and I'm going, the year of my first stop, I am off to Coos County next weekend, or next week, and then Jackson County and then Lane County to give a presentation, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page, we have the same dialogue when it gets to the state level. And hopefully, we'll, we'll get through. A lot of times, you know, you, you run these things up a pole and I don't know my way around Salem at all, but I'm getting ready to maneuver, learn how to paddle that canoe. I have been dealing with Jeff Rhodes, he's the governor's marijuana advisor. He's been very helpful, along with Rob Ovett, who is the counsel for the Association of Oregon Counties. We've had endorsements from the Sheriff's Association, Realtors Association, Lipsec, Local Public Safety Committee, let's see, AOC has backed it, League of Oregon Cities has backed it. So it's extremely popular across the state. I'm hoping that we can get enough, get enough participation from our legislators up there to pull this thing off on the first go-around. But I'm told that you usually have to go four or five times before the legislature, before something pulls off. But I think we have a very, very good case and I don't, there's one of those things where the first thing is revenue, and I think we can show a positive, a positive outcome for the Department of Revenue. At the same time, we can show a positive outcome from all law enforcement in Southern Oregon. We went to a summit, Marijuana Summit last year, hosted by Billy Williams, his US Attorney, and it was a closed-door session. The governor was there to introduce everybody and then she left. But there was six US Attorneys, FBI was there, Homeland Security was there, everybody, there was six US Attorneys, I mean, everybody and their brother. IRS was there, Department of Revenue was there, closed-door summit. Out of all the presentations, myself and Rob Ovett teamed together on this right here, we were the only ones in the room with a solution. The only ones. Everybody else had a bunch of bellyache and what are we gonna do and what's the state gonna do, what's this, and we were the only ones with a solution. We have a problem in Southern Oregon, we have a solution in Southern Oregon, all you have to do is let us do it. We'll take care of it. I told the governor, I says, I am so fed up of Southern Oregon counties sitting on the front steps of the Capitol with a cardboard sign saying, help me. I'm done with it. Not gonna do that anymore. We have a way here to, to help ourselves and make this thing work, and that's what I'm doing for the first six months of my third year, my third year of my first term. And I'm gonna be, I've got a bag packed, it's in the backseat of my pickup, and when I'm, when they call and say, you gotta come and testify, I'm, I'm there. I will do that. So it might matter if I'm on vacation or not, I'm gonna go do it. This is that important to me, it's that important to all counties, all four counties. This is the, this may be the answer that we've all been looking for. All we need is a state to step aside and say, you go right ahead and do this. We've had other counties, at AOC, Association of Oregon Counties, they all wanna get on board. It was unanimous except for Phil Henderson from Deschutes.
Deschutes.
And Phil and I, we are very good colleagues. You know Phil, we all do.
Yes.
Great guy, but he has his issues, cuz at that time, Deschutes didn't have a whole bunch of marijuana growing there. Boy, they do now, cuz it's all greenhouse. And the greenhouses are taking, are putting on, used to be agricultural land, they're letting the land go fallow around the greenhouse instead of tending to the land, which is spreading seeds into the, into the crops next door. So this thing just has a tendency to snowball. He's changed his mind about that. But it was unanimous at AOC to back this and everybody said, when can we get started? We kinda had to, we'll stop right here, we need a pilot program to make sure this is exactly what we want. And I think this is a pretty open and shut case for it. Like I say, it's just a one deal. We had, another thing we did from the first one to the last one is we did put a number on that, we capped it at one dollar per square foot, we capped it at fifty dollars a plant. I don't want any county saying, ooh, I can see where I get that helicopter, and deciding to go five dollars a square foot and three hundred dollars a plant, because that's just unreasonable. I'm not here to put the industry out of business. It is a, I've been told by, and I've got growers in my office that have concern about where it's gonna take away our competitive edge in the marketplace. And I said, Southern Oregon has the very best pot in the entire world. It's sold in Tennessee, it's sold in Denmark, it's sold everywhere, it's got Josephine County DNA stamped all over it, Southern Oregon DNA. This is the place. Myrtlewood and marijuana grow here. Guess what? There's good wine, there's still thousand, two thousand dollars a bottle of wine and there's vineyards everywhere. We have the product, we have a good product, whether you like it or not, and I don't think it's gonna affect that. Talking to some of the growers, they go, you know what, we're on board. And we also wanna be part of the community. I've had legitimate growers, Amanda, and Amanda's worked with Julie Smeltzer on, and she, boy, she fought a tooth and nail, but now she's coming around. She came in my office the other day and she goes, how did you let Julie sneak out of here? I said, let me show you the door. She walked out, she didn't sneak out. And you, and just, I'll just say this outright, as soon as I saw a court voice, Commissioner Boyce up at AOC, I said, you pirate. You pirated a.
We just loaned her, sir.
And that was it. And I had some other adjectives to go with it.
She was on lease.
But I, I just wanna, I wanna tell you, you did, you did well with Julie Smeltzer. Really well. We passed, but before she left, we got our, our marijuana ordinances passed. We've had a huge, huge, huge move forward as far as our, our compounds go and, and trash and so on and so forth. So you got a, you got a good one there. And it wasn't the money, and her and I talked, and, and her and I talked at great length. And I, my final comment to hers, you do what's good for Julie. Her move here is what's good for Julie, I'll back her a hundred percent, all the way through.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Thank you.
Questions?
Commissioner Boyce. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna highlight your work with the US Attorneys. You know, I think what you're saying there, and it's, it needs to be said, Oregon is, correct me if I'm wrong, the number one exporter in the world of quality marijuana. We used to be the number one exporter of timber, so there, as you said, Carl Wilson, good news if you're able to get him on board and good work there. I wouldn't characterize your work during the short session as going nowhere. I think that set the stage. You got benefited, or we will benefit from your work with the other counties. And you and Director Smelzer, I think, is, just tell us what we can do and how we can help. Very happy to hear, not surprised you're going to Coos County and getting Lane County involved. There, there's some people we can work with there, would be very beneficial, I think, to the entire state. So excellent work. I know you spent a tremendous amount of time on this.
I used to have, I used to have hair like quartz. Now I don't have any hair and it's great.
Commissioner Gold.
I just had a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you say that it would be wise for us to put an advisory section, question on our ballot regarding this issue, simply because I think there's a timeline of February nineteenth to get that on?
Yes.
And I would think that your case would be much stronger if you went in to the legislature showing that you had the seventy percent support.
You are absolutely correct, Commissioner Gold. That is exactly why we put two of them on the ballot. There is a copy of, of our advisory question in your packet there. Like I said, it does have the, it does have the element of a law enforcement trust fund because that was very, very popular. I talked to Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, Martha Walters, and she was in our office, we were blessed to have her come and visit, which you don't get that every once in a while, Chief Justice walks into the county commissioner, whoops, I got her autograph. I thought that was kinda cool cuz I had her bio there. But that was one of the things that she was interested in, is what would you do with the money? And I said, boy, court security is, it's on our list. We have a list of things that we really do need to do and what our needs are in Josephine County. And so that, that was, they liked that.
I have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
Presently, this is considered as farmland, the marijuana growers, and I know that farmland is taxed at a much lower rate.
Yes.
Than regular land.
Yes.
And you have to look at the product that's coming out. The product marijuana is worth a whole lot more than just regular crops. So I think that would be another strong point on this issue.
Yeah, and one of the other conversations we've had is that this industry's been here for roughly fifty years and haven't paid any taxes up until now on anything, income or whatever. I had a grower, a young grower in my office, Cody, and he was in my office, why, you don't understand, I pay all of these fees and you're just not, I don't get credit for that. And I said, well, let's just take them one at a time. So he named all the things that he pays, and I said, okay, great. So who do you write the check out to? Well, state of Oregon. I said, who'd you write this check out to? Well, Department of Revenue. I said, who'd you write this check out to? Well, it was OLCC. Who'd you write this one on? Well, OMP. And everything went, and I said, okay, you've shot, you've fired six arrows in the air? Not one of them stuck in the courthouse lawn to help pay for local law enforcement. I said, now, I'm gonna wreck, liken you back to the timber industry. And I had a, I had a chief of staff corner me and said, you can't do this because you can't single out marijuana. If you're gonna do it, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to tax corn and soybeans and lavender and strawberries and everybody else on farmland. I said, you've been doing it for years. She said, how do you know that? And I says, Doug Fernpine. Doug Fernpine. You taxed Doug Fernpine, but you didn't tax cedar, you didn't tax redwood, you didn't tax the hardwoods, you clear cut a whole hillside, the logger got, got a tax on cost of doing business for Doug Fernpine, but the rest of it was his. That was all money in his pocket. So we've already done that, we've established that precedent. And that's why we also wanted to run it through the legislature. I could've done this in Josephine County as a simple property tax. Count the plants, give you a fifty dollar bill for each plant and that's the end of it. I could've sent it just to Josephine County residents as a property tax proposal, there wouldn't been a darn thing the state could do about it. I want it to be, I want it to be legitimate. I want to be, I want this maybe, and I had a, I had a marijuana grower that, he said, you know, this may be the answer that everybody's been looking for. And I said, I don't answer to what, but it's gonna be the answer to law enforcement where I'm concerned. I only, my arms are around Josephine County. I was a city councilor for eight years and then I went to the county, I just, my arms had to get bigger. I'm not, I don't have any aspirations to go into state government or anything at all. I wanna fix locally what I can do. I was born in Josephine, I was born in, in Grass Pass, Oregon, I went to high school there, graduated nineteen sixty-seven. In nineteen sixty-seven, my fifty-six Chevy sat here in Gold Beach cuz I broke a crankshaft right up the hill.
You said that's the last time you were here?
No, almost, almost. I came over here with the DEQ to do some noise testing on your river racers. Not for them, but gathering information against them, so that was fine. But no, I, I born and raised right here in Southern Oregon, I'm a Southern Oregon boy, I was in the Navy for four years, came back to, to Grass Pass and my wife and two kids and, and we still live there. I've been married fifty years this coming summer. So I'm a hometown kid and, kid, I'm an old man, hometown old man now. But it's, you know, all of Southern Oregon to me, and I don't think, and I think Julie can attest to this, I'm not a county guy, we're more regional. And that's one of the things that I, I don't think Julie coming over here is a loss to Josephine County, you know why? Cuz she's gonna work for the region. That's what we've needed for so long, is a regional approach to our problems. Because north of here, they don't care what Southern Oregon's all about. So as we can fix our stuff here locally, I think we're gonna be miles ahead. And then we control it.
Right.
Money comes right back to us and, and we have the opportunity to put that money into our budgets and go from there. I think it'll strengthen everybody, so.
Commissioner.
Any other questions?
Just, you just referenced a marijuana grower, I assumed it was a legal grower, and how that relates to the lobby that they have in Salem. I think their, their title is Sun Growers Guild, is that correct?
Yeah. And here's, and here's another thing that happened from last year to this year, and it was kind of an odd, it was just odd that it happened this way. But the president of Sun Growers Guild in, in Josephine County, one of the things our one of the things our representative said is, no, I'm just not interested unless the Sun Growers Guild gets on board. And well, they're not gonna get on board for this, that's for sure. Some of them do, some of them don't. Farms Inc. is on board, which is another growing, uh, another growing coalition. But the president of Sun Growers Guild, Branford County Commissioner. Branford County Commissioner. Good. We wanna get you involved in government, that's where you'll be heard, that's where you can make a difference. So he was, oh, he said right there, I'm the way, marijuana runs this county now, we're responsible for the economic stability and blah, blah, blah of Southern Oregon. Cut his hair off. Cut his hair off, had black, long hair. Got five percent of the vote. I, next time I saw him, I said, and he's one of the big lobbyists up in Salem, he's known all over the Capitol Building. And I told him, I said, Pete, I wouldn't have cut my beard off for less than twenty percent. And you cut your hair off for five, just joking with him. But, but another thing that did show is that maybe, maybe that industry isn't as strong as it thinks it is. That maybe they do need to, to become part of the community. They need to have that sense of community, I would like nothing better than to be able to say that, yeah, this, this is the dollars and cents that funded that, that funded that Sheriff's Department. And, and, you know, that, that's part of community. Amanda, she's on board with that, she gets it, and she's the president of Farms Inc. Yeah. So, you know, this is, uh, this was a heavy lift, I don't know if we can pull it off. Usually, like I said, boy, if we pull it off in the first go around at, at the legislature, it's almost a miracle. But that doesn't mean I'm gonna fight any less. I'm gonna be there every time they want questions answered, and I'm gonna be there, I've, we're gonna put out a deal, our, our, uh, our, uh, Public Information Officer and I are working on a deal, and it's going to go, it's called County Commissioner's Corner, and it's gonna go to every legislature, every legislator. And it's going to be basically three to five minutes every couple of weeks, explaining the features and benefits of this proposal. They're gonna hear it right from us, the people in Southern Oregon, that its effects, so that somebody up in Benton County go, I don't know what the heck that is, you know, I'm not gonna vote for that. But it, what it will do is, like I said, there is a little something in it for everybody, every county in Oregon. If we can push the illegal grower, the black market grower, into the legal side of it, I think we're all gonna, where, where they can be watched, the cameras and all the other stuff, where they can be watched, I think we'll all benefit from it. Then every, as they divvy up the money at the end of the year, instead of a hundred and fifteen million, it's a hundred and sixty-five million, that all goes out by population. The big counties get money, the, the, you know, Willawa County, old Todd Nash up in Willawa County, cattle rancher, he's gonna get a little piece of the pie too. There's in it, something in it for everybody, so. And of course, the state will take their probably eight percent admin out of it, and, uh, before they divvy up any of it, which is perfectly, it's okay with me, as long as the lion's share, it comes back to where it's grown. So any other questions that I can answer for you?
Just wanna say thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gold, it's good to meet you, finally.
Meeting you.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, you know, anytime, I wanna extend a courtesy to all of you. Uh, you're allowed to come back over, you can come over to Josephine County, and we'll give you a cup of coffee, but bring Julie with you so we can pick her brain a little bit while she's there. Just teasing. Got a good one there, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Alright, next we have Rogue River Fish Loss, Steve Byerlin. And I just wanna give you a little history on Steve, it's gonna take him a minute or two to get set up here. Um, Steve is starting his forty-ninth year of private Rogue River fishery studies and conservation efforts. He started fishing the Rogue River for salmon, steelhead, and trout in nineteen sixty-seven. In nineteen seventy, he joined the new Rogue Fly Fishers and began on a volunteer career of fisheries projects that included fish ladder repairs, in-stream gabblins, fish screening, and Sav- Savage Rapids Dam removal. He spent thirteen years on the Oregon Fish Screening and Passage Task Force, four years as chairman. Under his leadership, the funding for fish screening and passage went from four hundred thousand dollars per year to seven point four million dollars per year. He spent more than a decade, more than a decade as the legislative chairman of the Oregon Guides and Packers, and served as the president of that group. Steve was founding member of the Currie Guide Association for over a decade, which was the strongest guide association in the state of Oregon. During his legislative time, he was a legislative director of Oregon Guides and Packers, he was named one of the top three fish conservative advocates by Governor Kitzhoffer, and was a finalist for the Oregon Fish and Wildlife Commissioner, but was denied center confirmation by Brady Adams of Grants Pass because of his work to remove the Savage Rapids Dam. He spent over twenty-three years on Oregon State Fish and Wildlife Boards and Committees, and volunteered for more than fifty-two years of his fishing life, and thirty years as a Rogue River fishing guide. Mr. Byerlin?
What'd you have against Brady Adams, by the way?
A very, very fine guy, there we go.
Yes.
We just had a disagreement on that. Um, he thought the river was gonna go dry if the dam was removed, and it didn't, you know. Um, I titled this Unknown Rogue River Spring Snook Tragedy, cuz I really think it's unknown, you know, and, uh, the driving force in this tragedy is Lost Creek Dam. Done a lot of good, but it has, has, has some problems. Uh, one of the things that I, when I say unknown, uh, I don't even know of a fish and wildlife person that knows it. I talked to the head of the, uh, of the Rogue River for Lost Creek Dam, didn't know it, you know. And, uh, so, things get lost in time. The Lost Creek Dam project started in nineteen thirty-five, a long time ago. You know, most people were, you know, involved in that are no longer with us, you know. Uh, the nineteen fifties, it kinda slowed down during the war, and then the nineteen fifty-five flood came along. When the fifty-five flood came along, it came back into prominence, you know. There was a lot of damage done in the Rogue Basin, you know, from that flood. Nineteen fifty-six, there was a meeting in Grants Pass, uh, talking about the dam, and this is the, uh, from the EIS, and it's in every, every document going forward on the dam project. Any flood control plan detrimental to the fishery resource would be unacceptable by both local and to the federal and state fisheries agencies. This comes from the nineteen fifty-six meeting in Grants Pass. And, uh, the, uh, all the documentation I found, Currie County was absent. I found no, no comments out of Currie County at any time. Um, got ahead of myself. Okay. The nineteen seventy-two environmental impact statement is the guiding, um, document for the project. It's, it's kinda a little bit hard to follow, but in nineteen sixty-two, the dam, uh, was authorized in a flood control act. And it's only, the authorization is only about a hundred words. And that statement from Grants Pass meeting is in that hundred words. And so, as it was authorized, it was a hundred and six million dollars that authorized the, the project, but includes Elk Creek and Applegate as well. Uh, the project will effectively isolate upstream drainage area from use by anadromous fish. Maintenance of anadromous fish and residential fish populations will be dependent upon fish hatchery, coal rivers, for artificial spawning and rearing. Thirty-three percent of the spring salmon habitat was lost above the dam. Interesting thing about that habitat, that habitat had snow on the ground in the winter, and the water ran pretty fast up there. Uh, so the water was real cold. Uh, fish eggs hatch by thermal units, longer, when they're in the gravel, the warmer the water is, the sooner they hatch. You know, and so when you take them out of cold water, put them into warm water, they hatch sooner, hatch into a wintertime environment, they don't survive well. Um, ODFW and US Army Corps of Engineers have failed to adhere to the EIS of nineteen seventy-two. For the past fourteen years, Coal Rivers Hatchery has not met the agreed quota of fish that were supposed to be produced in the EIS. Violation of the EIS and dam authorization has been, uh, has damaged Rogue Basin economy. These violations extend to the contract with local governments and the public. They had, I can't tell you how many meetings around selling this project. Dog and pony show is what I call it, you know, they come to town, have a meeting, you know, telling what the damn project's gonna do for you, and how it's all gonna be. Not anybody in those meetings says, yeah, it's okay to destroy spring snook salmon, we don't care, you know. Um, they, uh, fault, uh, faulty well, and well-challenged assumptions by the Corps of Engineers concerning gravel migrations have severely harmed natural spawning. There's two issues, hatchery and natural, and they kinda go together as a double whammy. The Corps of Engineers did, is they, and I found this in the EIS, I've read every word in it, you know, uh, many times, and the parts that people don't usually read is the comments from the public. Page after page after page of comments from the public over the time that these hearings were going on. And one gentleman doesn't identify who it is, stood up in the meeting, and said, when you build a three hundred and twenty-five foot high dam, gravel will not jump over it. So gravel migration will stop. You know, how are you going to address that? And the Corps person said, very simple. The banks are going to erode, and that's gonna put gravel into the river, and the tributaries are gonna feed that gravel, you know, uh, into the river, and so we'll have that, uh, uh, gravel from that. Well, there really aren't any tributaries. When you control the flow during floods, there really isn't any erosion, you know. And so, to some extent, he was right when he talked about the Lower Road. But he certainly wasn't right when he talked about the Upper Road, where all the spring snooks spawn. Every spring schnook, schnook salmon on a rogue spawns from Medford upstream to the dam, every one of them. And the, um, that twenty-five mile stretch, and most of those, seventy percent of them spawned from Shady Cove up. Shady Cove up, pretty darn gravel poor now. Uh, I was there before they built the dam, I fished that water, there's people around that have, you know, it was built, uh, closed in seventy-seven. Uh, it's tremendously different than what it used to be, it's still a viable river, though. Um, I, I will go back to this gravel when we get to the map, down a little bit farther. This is, uh, the Coal River's hatchery litigation, uh, requirement for EIS is to produce thirteen thousand twenty returning adult spring snooks to the hatchery. Adults to the hatchery, cuz that's what was lost above the dam. That was an ODFW study that came up with that number. Now they don't claim it. Um, the reported, uh, return is in orange, but that included jacks that were not adults, which are, uh, salmon under twenty-four inches. And in the spring salmon, they even have subjacks that are under sixteen inches. Um, the, uh, wild, uh, run was also included, good wild fish would swim to the hatchery. And so the red is the actual return. This has been hidden from us for a long time. It's just been the last three years that they've put reports out that delineated wild fish swimming in the hatchery, jacks, fish swimming in the hatchery, and subjacks, none of which are part of the goal, to the thirteen thousand twenty. And I call it a goal, and I shouldn't, it's a requirement, you know. Um, this is pretty telling. If you look at two thousand and sixteen, that number represents nineteen hundred fish that returned out of thirteen thousand twenty. Every one of these fish has a tremendous value, whether it's caught or it isn't caught. You know, uh, fish in the Rogue River, can you imagine the, you know, just thinking about the Rogue River and without fish? How many people would come to see it? How many people would walk the stream? How many people would view the spawning bids? How many people would, you know, uh, feel that it was a healthy thing to have? You know, not many. The hatchery spring snook runs are down sixty-three percent in an average over the last fourteen years. Only point thirty-eight percent of spring snook smolt releases are returning to the hatchery. Steelhead from the same hatchery averaged three percent, or eight times higher. The difference is, in my view, is that they're releasing the spring snook salmon, I've talked about blue in my face for years. Uh, the fish that they're releasing, the hatchery fish are being released in August, September, and the first of October. And there's like one point six million being released out of one point seven during that timeframe, you know. That's when the river's the lowest, the water temperatures down below are in the seventies. Squawfish that were not a native species that came in the river in about nineteen seventy-seven. After the dam, habitat changed, they never were able to, you know, live in the river until then, you know. Uh, I think they're consuming those smolt going down, you know. And if you have, uh, them being fed into a mass of predation, interesting thing, steelhead released in May, water's still high and still cold, comes back at eight times. The amount of fish they're releasing right now, the smolt for spring salmon, eight times that, if they were, you know, came back at that level, would be fifty-one thousand spring snook hatchery fish, not thirteen. Hatchery management is the issue. Um, the re- re- excuse me, the recent, uh, average for fourteen years of forty-eight hundred and eighty-one coming back is a far cry from, uh, thirteen thousand twenty. Uh, results in a four point seven million dollar annual loss, uh, economic loss. And I'm using on the economic loss, I know it'll be questioned, they're, they're saying that the salmon are worth the five hundred and seventy-six dollars. That is if there's a productive run. The fewer there are, the higher it goes up. If you go fishing, and you catch one fish, or none, that costs. If you go fishing and you catch a bunch of fish, then the cost goes down, cuz it's averaged over time. So the more fish there are, the less the value of the fish is. But right now, it is at five hundred and seventy-six dollars, and that is in two thousand and seven dollars, twelve years ago. We use the, this is, the economic, uh, value of Rogue River salmon is the study I use, it's the most recent. It was done in ni- two thousand and nine, and it has two thousand and seven dollars in it. The, uh, one previous to that was nineteen ninety-one, so it would even be farther back. But, uh, they say in here that if the Rogue River had no fish, what value would that to be to our economies and everything? And, uh, over time, uh, you know, one point five billion dollars, if we had no fish, you know. Um, it's, it's a big driver and a big thing to our tourism, and, uh, and also our, uh, travel industry. Um, natural spawning spring snook are down sixty percent, that's the wild fish. Um, remember, thirty-three percent of their habitat was lost. So if you subtracted that from the historical run, you'd need to have twenty-six thousand four hundred fish coming back. Or four, excuse me, twenty-six thousand forty. Um, the, uh, right now, we're averaging, we have an average of eighty-six hundred in many years, that's quite a bit less than that. Uh, the economic value of Rogue River salmon is five hundred and seventy-six, as I said. Uh, the shortfall of seventeen thousand four hundred translates to ten million dollars economic loss on the wild fish. That doesn't include the four point seven on the hatchery fish. You know. So now we're up around fifteen million dollars annually, you know. Um, that doesn't mean all those fish would've been caught, that's the value of the fish, you know. And, uh, the wild spring snook harvest has been virtually stopped, resulting in huge economic impacts and very pissed off fishermen. You know, that, uh, because it's not necessary, you know. Wild and natural spring snook populations are shattered by two predictable but manageable habitat issues. Uh, the dam water released temperatures during egg incubation is too warm, they hatch too soon. Virtually become lethal for them, even if they spawn successfully in that Upper Road. Uh, but I would say above Elk Creek. Uh, the, uh, it's not controllable, they've done what they can to bring the coldest water out of the dam. They've got a temperature tower that goes up and down, but in the wintertime, the water on top is the cold water. Water below is the warm water. And it switches around and turns over, you know, in the, toward the summer months, so they can release colder water, which is good for the river and fall snook. Lack of spawning habitat, there are, uh, many options for both issues. And I'll hit on that here in a minute. Um, the fall snook populations have, uh, increased, and they're doing well. And when I was a young man, there wasn't a fishery for fall snook at Grants Pass. Uh, my fishing buddy and I basically discovered that fishery, it was right in front of everybody. But once the dam was closed, the water was colder, the fall snook come up, came up farther, and, uh, created quite a fishery up there. Uh, ODFW was so clueless that they said, we developed a fishery at Grants Pass, we developed a whole new run. And then they turned around and closed the fishery in the Lower River, because there wasn't any fish down here. That's because the fish, water's condition was better, so they went farther upriver. It didn't that they didn't exist, but they closed it down for about ten years, you know. So fishing down here, you know, they just didn't get it, you know. But, uh, remember that, uh, lack of spawning habitat, there are options, I'm gonna explain that in a minute. Here we are. Here's the map. And the map that you see here, where you see the green, that's very productive spawning habit today. You know, there's still gravel there. The area below the dam was one of the most, where'd my cursor go? Crazy. Right here. If I get it there, the area below the dam, right here, where you see that little blue strip, was one of the most productive spawning, uh, stretches on the Rogue River. There's no gravel there now. And the water temperature is a problem. If you come down by Trail Creek, which is a, no, you come down to Elk Creek first, and, uh, I'll go on that side. Elk Creek, there, with the time that the, uh, legislation was put through, Elk Creek was to have a dam on it. They started building it, and they notched it, and, uh, it's not a great spring hamlet salmon stream, it doesn't produce a lot of gravel, you know, down below, there was a great, great spawning area below it that's almost gone, uh, still shows it green. But they even have a restaurant on the Rogue up there, and, uh, that trail, that, uh, sat on the banks of the river, and you sat at picnic tables and had your hamburger and, you know, milkshake, whatever, and watched the salmon spawning below you. They had binoculars and for rent, you know, for a quarter or whatever, you know, there. And it was a, quite a tourist attraction at the time. Well, it's, uh, uh, it was called Rogue Elk, you know, right there, you know, and, uh, but that's gone. Uh, below Trail Creek and just above Shady Cove is a, is a, uh, a very good spawning area next to the banks, you know. Not out in the middle of the river, but next to the banks. And, uh, virtually all, seventy percent of the salmon spawned from Shady Cove. And virtually seventy percent of the salmon spawn from Shady Cove up. If you follow down that, you don't see many tributaries. How the Corps of Engineers came up that they were going to have gravel coming from these tributaries that are gravel poor and floor po- flow poor is, was beyond me. The secret, I believe, is, and biologists believe with me, is Big Butte Creek. Big Butte Creek, you see where it says Coal River's Hatchery, there's a little squiggle there, that is a fish blockage. Ten percent of the wild spring snook spawn in a one-mile stretch. Of the entire Rogue River run spawns in that one-mile stretch. So it shows that the habitat is, you know, is good. They have a hard time getting over the flow, over the Crowfoot Falls there, but it's because a hundred cubic feet a second is diverted by Eagle Point Irrigation District. There's only about sixty to seventy foot of feet per second going over that dam. And then another fifty cubic feet a second is taken out by Medford Irrigation District. And so it makes the stream water poor. And we have been able to talk to Eagle Point Irrigation District, I did the first time and got them to move their maintenance time that they, window, they had two weeks to shut down maintenance time during the time the spring snook respond, you know, going up the river. And that added a hundred cubic feet to the flow. That year, we had a tremendous increase in spawning in the creek, you know, just because they could get there. But it can be addressed in this, in this section. Little Butte Creek is also another possibility clear down here at Eagle Point. But again, it gets all the water sucked out of it. This is kind of a last minute add that I added in there. I was kind of told that it might not be understandable, but I think it's important. It's, this isn't my documentation. This is from ODFW. And in ten-year blocks, nineteen eighty-one to nineteen ninety, the average return for hatchery fish was thirty-four thousand. They had fourteen, I mean, excuse me, forty-three percent jacks in those years. Unbelievable. Usually it averages about twenty percent. So you subtract that out, so you've got nineteen thousand six hundred and forty-three, which beat the thirteen thousand and twenty required by, to a hundred and fifty-one percent. We had a two, and I checked the number of smolt that were released, you get a two point six percent return during that timeframe. Then ninety-one to two thousand, it dropped to twenty-five thousand five, still not, still pretty darn good. Only had fourteen percent jacks, you know, so we ended up with twenty-four thousand. Actually increased the number of adults coming back for a hundred and eighty-nine, but the return per smolt was one point nine percent. Oh one to oh ten, it dropped to ninety-six, oh two. Huge drop, you know. After you subtract the jacks, you had seventy-eight, ninety-eight. Interesting to point out that on the, the two with those stars on them above, the nineteen ninety and two thousand, those counts still included the wild in there, you know. And so they, they weren't backed out yet because that would have been reduced probably by close to ten percent. But seventy-eight, ninety-eight, forty percent under what was required and only a point fifty-four percent coming back, you know. And then two thousand eleven, two thousand eighteen, sixty-four, nineteen on the full count after the jacks and wild were removed, fifty-one, seventy-two were a minus sixty-two percent and a point three eight percent return. That is a hatchery failure. And ODFW, I'm not going to beg on the Corps right here, but ODFW is a contractor for running the hatchery. They contract with the Corps of Engineers. The contract has stipulations on what is to be done, you know. ODFW is apparently unaware of that stipulation or it isn't in the contract, you know, because they don't seem to see that there's a problem here, you know, that much. Well, they do now, but just recently they started figuring out. But over fourteen years, they think you would have came forward and say, you know, we've got a problem here, you know, and tell the public and, you know, think it's hidden, you know. I don't doubt anybody in this room knew that, you know, before I brought it up. I know I worked on fisheries for years. I didn't know it, you know. And, but it's a hatchery issue. It's in the hatchery. It's not, you know, steelhead go down, come back at a three percent rate. The springers go down and they come back at a point thirty-eight percent rate. They go through the same streams, same predators, same water, same ocean, you know, so, and they come, and so it has to be within the hatchery. And what I think it is, is release timing. And I think the problem, reason why ODFW has a problem with the release timing is comes to dollars and cents. They open the hatchery gates and the smolt go out on their own. So one point six million or one point seven million going out on their own, self-volunteer going down the river. Well, if they go down in the early part of the year, the little fry of the wild fish have just come out of the gravel and these avarice hatchery fish come out and they eat those fry, you know. So right now, there's about a ten percent impact with them releasing them in August and September and October, you know, seven to ten percent. If they were to move into May and release them that way, there would be a much higher impact than those little fry with them eating them. However, if they put them in a truck, took them below the spring salmon spawning beds and let them go, they wouldn't have that ten percent and they could release them in a different time. But putting them in a truck and hauling them down there costs money. I don't particularly care about the money. I have a contract that they're supposed to be obeying. Corps of Engineers pays that contract, you know. That's their responsibility, not our responsibility to pony up the money so they can truck the fish down. But they have a real hard time coming forward and saying, "We're screwing up because we don't have the money to do it." It's much like the marijuana stuff, you know, when they don't go and check the grows out and stuff, you know. Comes down to money. Well, that's, in this case, it's not an excuse, you know. The final impact statement of nineteen seventy-two was the official directive for the Lost Creek Dam project. That directive told them how to remove the debris when they built the dam, how to pull stumps, where the dam was going to go, where gravel removals go, how many homes were going to be removed, where to relocate highways, where to put power poles, you know, and continuous, continuous amount of stuff on how the dam was supposed to be put together, including thirteen thousand and twenty hatchery production. "We must recognize that the Department of Fish and Wildlife, together with the Army Corps of Engineers, were entrusted to follow the guidelines outlined in EIS. The objective was to ensure viable, healthy Rogue River spring snook salmon population." It appears this has been forgotten. And I think that is a very accurate. They have forgotten what they were supposed to do and they didn't go back and look at the documents. The documents aren't easy to come by, you know.
Or they're ignoring it.
Mm-hmm, yep. "When combining the economic value of Lost Creek Project of both natural producing wild, if I use the word wild, somebody will stand up and say, 'There are no wild fish in the Rogue River. They've been, you know, hatchery fish have been put in, so they're not wild anymore.'" Well, natural producing is any fish that spawns in the river by itself, you know. And, and hatchery spring snook combined, the price tag is two hundred and eighty-nine million dollar loss over the last twenty years. That's a pretty impressive number. I don't expect them to write us a check for two hundred and eighty-nine million dollars, you know. But we've still got to turn this around. I want to make sure that you understand what kind of a negative impact there is here. The failed, failure here to steps outlined in the EIS environmental impact statement is both a violation of the EIS and dam authorization. Now, if the dam authorization is violated, doesn't that mean that it's operating illegally? I think that should be pointed out, you know. "The failure to uphold the contract, which is EIS, with local governments and the public who supported the project cannot be ignored. Without an action, the decline outlined in this discussion will continue with even greater economic harm." We're behind the eight ball on this, but to be truthful, we didn't have this information until the last three years and we had to let a little bit of that information build so we could see the trend, you know. That's it. And I do have a comment, though, you know, that's not in this thing. I think one of the questions might, so what do we do?
That was my question.
Okay.
That was mine also.
I think how we start this is I would like to see a declaration of no confidence in the Corps of Engineers and ODFW when it's concerned spring snook. And I'd like to make this presentation to Jolting County Commissioners and the Jackson County Commissioners. And at that time, convene a member of each one of the county commissions to decide the next steps to be taken and maybe work with the Associated Oregon Counties Legal Group.
Well, I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to read something into the record actually that I prepared because Steve and I have come, I've talked about this many, many times. I've been to some meetings with Steve about this issue. And what I want to read in it is, it is my view that a violation of this dam authorization documents and local government and public binding agreements put Lost Creek Dam's authorization in question. And like Steve said, the dam is likely operating illegally. It has damaged the salmon population in the Rogue River watershed for generations to come and has also damaged our sport, fishing, our tourism, our economic development, and any other public vacation income resources in business and family settings that we have here. In my opinion, the blatant disregard to keep a contractual agreement, even after being notified on several occasions, is punitive. Their failure to meet salmon quotas back to the hatchery must be dealt with and we must deal with it now. There is a black and white contract in simple layman's terms that says they have to perform these things every year and in order to get the dam, the Corps of Engineers signed off on that. And they have failed on it year after year after year, causing a lot of the loss of fish we have in the river, the tourism, the guides have lost their businesses, local economies are dwindling because of their failures here. And I think we need to step forward as a community and address this at a minimum, address it and see what kind of response we get from them. And even if we don't get a monetary response, maybe we can, you know, get a correction on this forward, you know, moving forward with this, that at least they can mitigate the losses of the fish.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you.
Sorry, I was looking.
That's okay.
Your recommendation to go to the other counties, starting with a vote of no confidence, you know, we tried that with the Forest Service after the Chetco bar fire, didn't get support. But this is not unlike, as you well know, the ONC Act of nineteen thirty-seven. We were just talking about with Commissioner Young in the office before the meeting today, where they just basically disregarded a federal law. And that law is to have sustained yield of five hundred million board feet in any given year. And we know in the BLM eighteen counties in Oregon, it grows by one point two billion board feet. So we're not even, we're harvesting about two hundred, two hundred, twenty percent of what they're required to do. And here, it just goes, just goes way beyond and it grows out of control. So this is a good, good approach. I remember when the dam, my first year to run tour boat was nineteen seventy-three. The Coal River Fish Hatchery was a tremendous source of pride because it had the production capacity to be the largest fish hatchery in the world at that time, the mid-seventies. So throughout Oregon, it was, we're going to have unlimited salmon. This is well managed. This is a, again, a source of pride. And it's, it's really sad to see how this has devolved into where we are now. And thank you for this incredible work. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gold?
I just have one question. If you could have the ultimate solution rather than letters and so forth, what would that be?
That would be, as far as the fish, would be that they truck the smolt downstream and released them below the spring salmon spawning areas to go down. And they do that in a time that the water is high and cold before the squawfish get active, you know.
And my suggestion would be rather than a resolution against everything, have a solution included there.
I, I didn't do that for one reason, because I felt the county commissioners needed to have input into what that might be. And I didn't think that myself directing that or putting that was the right direction.
Quite frankly, I'm not an expert on fishing, but...
I would certainly help, you know, craft that or whatever, you know, some kind of...
Yeah, and it seems to me like you're the expert, so I would rely on your expertise.
I would also like to see the Corps come up with twenty-five million dollars to create a new spawning tributary per se and fix Big Butte Creek where the spring salmon could get up there and spawn. Because by just putting gravel in the river, you're still going to have the water temperature issue and, but Big Butte Creek has the water temperatures that were the same as the historic river was before the dam the other side, you know, and...
At least they have access to the printing press, so...
Question, would forming a task force, forming a group of people now be premature or...
No, I, I think it goes together. I, I personally would like to see a no confidence, you know, document, you know, from the commissions, you know, each one, you know. And then from that, form task force group to put together, maybe with one commissioner from each county, you know, and then a, two or three, you know, public members, you know, from that. I have no faith in ODFW. I was a member of the spring salmon task force for the Rogue River spring snook. We spent three years crafting a solution, you know. And the public members voted, the majority voted to take an option. ODFW said, "No, we don't like that option because it opens up new habitat in Big Butte Creek." They voted against it. That was ten years ago. And we've had very little improvement in that timeframe, you know, since then. We're now eleven years, going on twelve years into it, you know. And I have little faith that, that moving ahead in any direction other than baby incremental steps that, you know, you're declining more than going up.
But the numbers certainly don't lie.
Yeah. And they're not my numbers. I'm just reporting on them.
Seems we have Commissioner DeYoung here.
We can volunteer.
Maybe he can volunteer also to have, set up a meeting for, for you there and, and we can start to move forward with some, with some things that way.
I've got that written down. I'd like to have, you know, set up a time where maybe you can over give our commissioners a...
I'll make the...
...presentation. That's fantastic. We've done a lot of work there. Sure? I think, I think this, I think solidarity of all the counties that are...
Power in numbers. There's power in numbers. Ms. Moser? Can we get this for maybe the next meeting as well?
Direct staff to work towards a vote of no confidence?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we can put that on there and I could also coordinate with Josephine County to make sure that they have a presentation scheduled.
I think I have given some of this to the commissioners. I'm not sure who got them, you know, but these are the in-depth information that supports the presentation, you know.
I have.
And so...
I would like to look for you to move forward, though, you know, forming a task group and we'll get some commissioners on board with that. But if you could start to, to put that in your mind on how you'd like to do that, I'd love to see you head that up with your experience and expertise. I, I don't think I'd want anyone that I know of right away ahead of that. Yes, sir?
Can I ask a question? Why wouldn't, why wouldn't fish and wildlife want to fix it? What's, what's the, why? I mean, you get, fish wildlife, ah, we don't want to open up Butte Creek.
Well, there was a past biologist for the Corps of Engineers out of Portland. And he's retired now. And I remember about a year before he retired, he'd been pushing me for a number of years to do something, bring it forward, you know, get, you know, things. I didn't have the information. It wasn't available. Can't just poof it out of the air, you know. Timing wasn't right. But he actually came into my show booth in Portland, was a river guide and was booking trip, and grabbed a hold of me by the shirt and put me against the wall. And he says, "I'm not going to be here forever. So I know you know about this. We need to fix this now." And he was really big on the gravel, you know. I haven't talked to him for a few years, but I will chase him down, so...
I will also say a lot of this documentation has just come to light, like Steve said, in the last couple of years. So I can't imagine why they wouldn't want to either, but we attended a meeting not long ago and it was still sweeping things along and not wanting to deal with it.
It's not surprising. I mean, we're in the deeper side of it. There's a number of issues in southern Oregon that they're doing.
Into the mic, they're going to... You've got to step up the mic.
Thank you, sir.
We're getting red flags all over.
All righty. Next, we have a presentation from the TLT Transient Lodging Tax, Ron Crook.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. So I can, Mr. Hopkins, you wanted to be at number seven, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Just so you know, we're probably not going to get it to that till after lunch, so if you have something else you need to do.
With me today is Bob Travate, one of the members that had worked on the original proposal. And to give a little bit of background, first of all, the Citizens Revenue Task Force was appointed by the county commissioners to consider possible funding opportunities to help the county with its financial problems. The committee reviewed a PowerPoint presentation on a proposed transit lodging tax. And it was approved and forwarded on to the county commissioners for their consideration. Later today, we have the second reading on that proposed measure. But before the reading, we have a short PowerPoint presentation for you today. This is to provide you with information regarding some questions previously asked. And we thought it'd be best to have this presentation before your second reading. We also ask that questions be deferred until the end of the presentation. We would refer questions regarding statutes be directed to county council. ORS 328.300 is the Transit Lodging Tax. And it means a tax imposed by a unit of local government on the sale services of furnishing of transit lodging. The visitors to the county, the tourists. Transit means, lodging means hotel motel and end dwelling units that are used for temporary overnight occupancy. Spaces used for parking recreational vehicles or erecting tents during periods of human occupancy or houses, cabins, condominiums, apartment units, or other dwelling units or portions of any of these dwelling units that are used for temporary human occupancy. And that's for less than 30 days. We also have, excuse me. At least 70% on the statute, 70% of the net revenue from a new or increased local transit lodging tax shall be used for the purposes described in subsection A and C. A, fund tourism promotion or tourism related facilities. C, finance or refinance the debt of tourism related facilities and pay reasonable administrative costs incurred in financing or refinancing that debt provided that. And that the net revenue may be used for administrative costs only if the unit of local government provides a collection reimbursement charge. And B, upon retirement of the debt, the unit of local government reduces the tax by the amount by which the tax was increased to finance or refinance the debt. C is no more than 30% of the net revenue from a new or increased local transit lodging tax may be used for the purpose described in subsection B of the section. And subsection B is to fund city or county services. So that is open for use by the county, but the 70% has to be used on tourism. Additional points, Transit Lodging Tax is a percentage of lodging charges incurred by the customer, the visitor coming to the county. Tax rates are set by individual jurisdictions. Tax rate ranges in Oregon are 2% to 13.5%. Most are 6 to 9%. More than 100 jurisdictions of cities and counties in Oregon have imposed Transit Lodging Tax. There are approximately 100 lodging facilities in the unincorporated area of Curry County that would be subject to a TLT if approved. And according to 2017 statistics, roughly 20 of these units are in Northern Curry County, 54 in the Central Curry County, 30 in the Southern portion of the county. I have Bob to present a lot of information now concerning the rest of the presentation.
Okay. So once again, these, this just came from the 2017 because that's the last time they had the full year doing that. 2018 just finished. That's coming. So these numbers couldn't increase. So currently, right now, the total Curry County impact would be our overnight visitors. We have over 100 and a half million visitor spending is looking at $132.6 million, this is all there. And then, of course, the visitors spend $29 million in the lodging. And the average day in Curry County is two nights. So you see here, looks what the income, the impact here is on the, on the county income. And then down here in the last line, you can see for every $100 spent, that generates, you know, about 3.44 in local tax revenue. So that's going to, we're trying to do that. So the whole purpose of doing the, the TLT and bringing it about when it was doing that is to increase tourism, tourism related businesses, and to help improve the economy and create new support businesses, which relates to jobs. Here, that's what we're looking at here. So here comes where the, the nuts and bolts of everything here for you to look at and see. We'll try to walk you through this column by column on this. So the first column here, it represents the lodging sales in the unincorporated area of Curry County. This does not include the cities. So this is strictly just county property. That is currently being reported from 2006 to 2017. The second set of numbers is the gross TLT revenue that would have been brought into the county had the 7% TLT had been in place since 2006. So you can see there that by those numbers is that we had about eight, well, we had $8.75 million that left the county. So that would have been a big impact in here for the county to do that. The 5% collection is what, what the lodging facilities collects to do that. That's held back for them. And they get that payment for the handling and the reporting of this. And this would be an income for them. This is not them paying it. This is the visitors paying, they're doing, which we all do when we all go to hotels. Then we have here what the net revenue for the TLT would be down here at the, at the bottom. For just 2017, that would have been $860,000. The 12-year period, we're looking at $8.2 million. That would have been used for the TLT purposes according to statute. And currently, right now, every lodging facility is already collecting state TLT. So they already have a process in place to collect and report. So this would be just another item. So it's not really a difficult impact for them to handle. Then here we have the third set of numbers. We have this group right here where it says the division of funds. And it shows that 70% tourism, 30% to general fund. And a proposal suggesting that 25% of that go to fund road patrol deputies. So that would help the law enforcement. Once again, in that 12-year period, that would have been $2 million over that time to do this. 5% to go to the county administration. And you can see how to work that out. But that 12-year total would have brought in $413,000 to the county coffers to do that. I'm trying to read. I just managed to break my glasses before we started. It's wonderful. So just to break it down here, then finally, it comes out to be in the last 12 years, and this is what our records went back for where we searched it. That's why we stopped at 2006 to do that. That would have been $6 million. That would have been nearly $6 million collected for tourism. $2.5 million for the county. And it, so that's where it totals come out. We have $8.7 million that left our economy. So whether that's the funding of facilities or however it's used under the statute, it, that's what have been there and increased our, the economic impact for us. And then finally, the division of the promotional funds. And this is what was proposed and it was also brought to when the, the Citizens Revenue put together the thing for us. We got down here, it's a proposal that the event center would get 50% of the 70% that's available. And the other 50%, we go to countywide usage to do that for the same things under the ordinance was gone. And then currently, right now, the, the event center funds would be used for, under the rules listed by the ORS, the statute, this would redevelopment, the property as being a priority. These funds could help the event center obtain matching grants. And in turn, the event center would generate more income via the increased tourism related event opportunities, which would help the economy of the entire county. This is not just where it's at. This is a countywide benefit for this. So this thing here, this is pretty self-explanatory. And once again, that's why we refer these things to that. But this shows you what the Tourism Committee would be put together, which falls in line with what you were already given as for the ordinance is going on here. And then the review to keep everything going on it. So once again, all that stuff would be, is part of the ordinance that we have in place. And, and this main thing is to keep in mind is that the commissioners will have the final authority of use of the funds throughout the appointed committees, which is required. Develop an annual needs assessment, strategies for use of our funds. It must be approved by the commissioners. So you guys still have a very good oversight on that. So then, pretty much, that's what we have right there on this to do that. It was the information that was provided to them. So we just want to thank you for your time, the work of the Citizens Review Task Force. They did that, helped put this together. We ask for your approval and support of these TLT ordinance so we can move forward and get this done.
One quick question. Would you be willing to come, come together with a, knowing that, you know, with these approximate numbers, with some sort of strategic plan for the fairgrounds for this next year, two years?
The, the Fairgrounds already has a strategic plan that was put together last year. It's already in place.
Funds though, for, what I'm saying, for like next year?
No, that was just for a strategic plan to put together to get it done. We need to look for that. Right now, the Fairgrounds is in the process of putting together a master plan to implement the strategic plan. That's getting done. The strategic plan is available online through the Event Center website under future planning. So it's available for everybody can look to see what direction we're looking to go. And it is based on redevelopment, increasing tourism income for the county.
Commissioner Gold?
I think, I got a copy of the strategic plan. It was in my box. So I don't know whether you guys got it, but anyway, I had one other question. I noticed you had broken out by numbers in North Curry and Central Curry and South Curry, the number of places that would be contributing. And I don't know whether you looked at the amount of income coming into those various entities. I think you'd find that, for instance, Best Western Beachfront, I'm, I'm sure that they contribute a huge amount from South County.
Yeah, it was, it was looked at. The information is based on facilities. We do have some idea what the numbers were on that. It's, it's information for you guys with to look at. And it's, it's really looking at countywide and we worry about that. The implementation part is what comes in when you have the committees and how we're going to fund this and how to get it done. This is just information to show you what kind of funds was available to the county based on all those things. And some of, and those were just the ones that were listed as reporting as of that time through the state website. So that's what that's for.
There's certainly more when 2018 reports are finalized, because they aren't yet. Our totals are not in for 2018. But it's certainly going to be more rental units available. That count's going to go up because now it also Airbnb, VRBO, which is Vacation Rental by Owner, and other vacation rental agencies will have to report. And some of, some of these have not reported in the past. So this is going to increase the amount of money coming in. But right now, we have the amount of money, the whole county sends reports to Salem because 1.8% tax everyone's paying now. But we don't have a breakdown really by area yet, except what we do have is the amount of units. We know that, that the South and Central End are going to be the major producers of revenue. But we were pleased to see that the North End had 20 units, 20 different units that would be bringing in revenue. So that's higher than what we thought. So it looks good.
Commissioner Gold?
I just have one other comment. When I talked to you in my office, one of my concerns about this was that the fair would be funded in perpetuity versus some of the other entities that are in sorely need and in need of improvements. One being the Port of Brookings Harbor, which is a big attraction for South Curry and also the county. So I, I think I was at rest after talking to you that this would not happen, that these other entities could get funding.
Well, that's, that's the good thing about this program though. 50% is going to go North, Central, and South. And also though, you have, that money has to be spent under those categories that the ORS statute states. It's just not operation expenses.
Oh, totally understood.
It is the development of new facilities and, and reconstruction of existing facilities to make them in the condition that they really need to be top condition.
Yeah, and, and that's, again, this discussion was, when we brought this down, this has been in work for a long time. Private citizens group getting done, engaging with past opponents. What they saw fit would help to get this through, to get it over the finish line, to get it done. And the importance of the, the event center for the entire economy of the, the entire county, not just where it's located at. And it brings those people through. And, and the thought was to leave the other 50% to be countywide. So based on what the, when they come in, they make their proposals, ask, I need this and that, and, and based on, you can value what they bring in here to do that. And instead of being limited to say, if we break up $100, well, you only get $30 out of that 100, well, maybe your project would be something that would be worthwhile spending the entire or, or part of that amount to do that, to fund that project for that year. So it's, it's left up to statutes and the committees to figure that part out.
With equal representation on that committee of two from the North, two Central, two South, one at large, those people are going to have to look at the needs of the whole county, not just the area that they're appointed from. So we feel this is a, a good method of being able to get these funds requests in and all of these different possible jobs that need to be done throughout the county.
I would just say that it's my hope that that committee would consider what brings the most tourism in when funding those projects and, and do that prioritize in that method.
Exactly. That's what it is.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Commissioner...
We gonna have a vote on this today or what was our direction?
Later in the day, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna have some more comments. And if you want to move now, we've got, what, 12 minutes or whatever? I can make them now.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The county has some tremendous opportunities here. And the, it would take some real political courage from this board. You look at what's going on in the state of Oregon right now. They are racing to find more taxes. And what has resurfaced, some interest anyway, recently has been the possibility of a consumption tax. What this does, it, I, I think in a good way, takes on the tourism, what some people... What some people, uh, local leaders, leaders referred to as Tourism B. But there's still Tourism A that comes across in the Dillner County border, over the border, Dillner Curry County border. And of course, a big challenge to make sure, and, and I support this. And I, I, if today's the vote, then I, I will support it. We're sitting here with one month, correct me if I'm wrong, on the deadline to make sure we get this on the primary ballot for May. Um, I'm concerned we might be ignoring that opportunity though from a consum- consumption tax. Now we have even, uh, potential leverage with the marijuana tax. I'm wondering if we couldn't recommend a workshop and put all three of these together potentially as separate, uh, initiatives for the voters, measures, or if we want to put them all in one. I know that may make my friends here a little nervous, um, but nobody else in, in the state of Oregon has the advantage that Curry County has with shoppers coming over to save almost ten percent from Dillner County. And at the very least, that is a million dollars. And now we have this tower issue that we need to potentially come up with a minimum of six hundred thousand, possibly in one year. And if we get this, if we have a group that can promote a combined tax and we put it before the voters with very rational reason on public safety, I think we have a good chance, and of course, as you've heard me say many times, do it before the state of Oregon does, or they will tax. Uh, I think the risk is incredibly high that they will do a sales tax and very little of that money will stay in Curry County. And we'll still be saddled with the difficulty in trying to take care of proper rural law enforcement. That's all for now, Mr. Chair. My recommendation is to, is to immediately have a workshop and meet this four-week deadline in order to get it on the ballot.
We've got four, or three different items for that workshop.
Potentially.
If you're looking to try and combine even on a separate ballot issue, um, we're gonna, would we need to come up with every one, a group from each one of those three issues to be present at that? Would we want, you know, Josephine County at that workshop to discuss more about the marijuana tax? Would we want the fairgrounds, you know, board there to talk about, you know, this?
Very least, we can get them on the phone.
I'm all for a workshop on it, because I, we, we, we do need to move forward with some funding.
Can we immediately schedule that then, in the, in the interest of the, the, the time issue?
Just a reminder that later on the agenda, the, uh, revenue task force is going to be presenting some ideas and ask for a direction on which one you want them to pursue so they can try and make that February deadline, February eighteenth deadline.
Why don't we wait till then and we'll make a decision then?
Good, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Can we, yes.
I just want to make sure that the news media, everyone's aware. What we're talking about is for the event center op, the development. This money isn't being used for county fair. This money is for event center year-round operation. And we need to stress, event center, not fairgrounds.
Okay, thank you. All right, we got a few minutes. Can we get through the, uh, the consent agenda E4?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented the historic Bagnell Ferry Boat Launch.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further comments? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And what we're going to do is, uh, Mr. Christensen, I think we're going to, um, ask you to, I, I, through an email, we talked to you about, uh, doing a, uh, an estimate to repair the, the boat launch area there.
Richard Christensen, County Roadmaster, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Uh, I thought about that email and it'd be really difficult to come up with a cost estimate without having a scope of work. But I've been fielding calls from ODFW, from citizens, and there's, uh, seems to be a very large amount of public support for repairing or replacing that ramp. And talking with ODFW, they think that we should reach out to Marine, State Marine Board and, uh, look at maybe having a larger project. So I've just started putting things together, but going out to the site, I see that a lot of people are launching their boats off the gravel bar across the river, not re, using the site now because it's hazard condition. And, uh, ODFW thinks that if that was repaired or upgraded, we would have a lot of end users. And ODFW let me know that if that property could be expanded to allow for parking for boats and trailers and maybe a small public restroom, that'd be more fundable in a larger grant application. And so what I kind of look at is, you know, commissioner, unified commissioner support, because I think, you know, some of the adjacent property owners may not want a project like this to happen. And that, you know, if we do a repair, it might be like seventy-five thousand dollars and that'd be just straight out of our funds. But if we were able to, uh, put together a grant and get a community team together, we might be able to do like ten percent matching funds and maybe get several hundreds of thousands of dollars. And maybe if we got a half million, it'd be fifty thousand dollars. It'd be less money, but we'd have a, a model facility. And so I think there's, there's a chance for developing parking along North Bank, Rogue River Road possibly, if we did a large, pursued a larger grant. So I'm just starting to put things together and I'll be sending you future emails.
Appreciate your work on it. Um, if you would coordinate and keep, uh, keep us up in the, in the loop on it. One issue that I, that I thought of those from a liability standpoint is, is it dangerous? I mean, you were there, I haven't been out to see it. I, I've heard it's, it's pretty, pretty rough. And I'm just wondering from a liability standpoint from the county, um, should we block that off somehow? Um, I know there's a sign up there says use at your own risk.
Correct, and, uh, the road department put that sign out there for earlier, uh, workshops and under county council suggestion, that'd be best to, uh, put, place, install that sign. But there was no support for, at that time, for blocking it off.
Do you think it would benefit the county to block it and from a safety and liability issue?
I think, I leave that up to county council.
Commissioner Boyce?
We don't want to close that boat ramp. It's been that way for years. I, if, Mr. Hopkins, do you have something you, I wanted to ask you about your last time you contacted Marine Board and, uh, Roadmaster Christensen reference to, uh, ODFW and, and how they might at least help us in planning. You know, I served on the Marine Board for eight years. There's been a long time since some of their, uh, facilities funds have come back to Curry County. So maybe you have a comment on that? And I think we are due for some help and, uh, in a good position to, uh, challenge them or ask for support.
Josh Hopkins, Curry County Parks Director. Uh, so first, let's just start with the idea of blocking off the boat ramp itself. That was a no-go with the last board. I think at the time when we were talking about it, I recommended that if that was the way the board wanted to go, we wouldn't block it off. We'd at le, at least leave a gate open for search and rescue. That's like the only access between, what is it, Lobster Creek Bridge?
And Foster Bar.
Yeah. Uh, so in the event of a search and rescue type situation, that's going to be the first spot they're going to go to launch out of. So completely blocking it off, not the best idea. From the liability standpoint, we're kind of covered under recreational immunity since we're not currently charging for it. So if we did run into a situation where someone did injure themselves or their boating equipment, that would be our first go-to as far as a defense for that. Uh, we do have a sign out there now, warning boaters, it's use at your own risk. And they've been using it at their own risk in its current shape for years. I mean, this isn't a situation that, last month, the boat ramp got knocked out of place from a winter storm. This has been a longstanding thing, the guides are used to it, the fishermen are used to it. So there's not going to be a lot of support from the public, especially if we're talking about blocking it off. Uh, as far as going forward with the Marine Board, when I've spoken to them in the past, the main thing they've talked about is due to the area's lack of available parking. That's part of the reason why they weren't really for the idea of supporting any projects on that site. Uh, they get, you know, grant applications for projects across the entire state. They had to come up with some sort of way of weeding out good projects from bad projects. One of the things they came up with is available parking spaces. Uh, just a quick way that, you know, they can kind of weed through and know. When I spoke with them and we were talking about it, they said that we could apply for certain things, but we'd be at such a low priority that they'd be out of their grant money before they even got to us. They mentioned that, you know, you need at least around six parking spaces for something that allow for a boat and a trailer, to allow for them to really start looking at your project as being something that's viable for them. Uh, Roadmaster Christensen mentioned that we do have a lot of right-of-way in the area. And he has expressed that he believes that we could possibly start enforcing that right-of-way and get those six spaces. But that would take a large effort from not only the board, you guys would basically have to come together to deal with the public that currently live in the area. And then, uh, the sheriff's office would need to be going down there and actually policing it. A code enforcement officer could possibly do that as well. The idea is we could put up signs limiting overnight parking in different areas, put up signs limiting hours of parking type of a thing, to kind, like curb that type of thing. But those signs aren't going to do anything unless there's actually buy-in in people enforcing it.
Okay. Well, I'd like to give Roadmaster Christensen the, uh, approval to go forward and, uh...
Go ahead.
I would like to add one other thing, uh, similar to what Mr. Christensen was talking about. You know, we could go down and do a simple fix, possibly, you know, just replace out the things and maybe seventy grand, something like that, like just the number he used. But if we're looking at actually developing this property, waiting on doing that would probably be the better way. That way we can make something bigger, because what we don't want to have happen is us spend seventy grand to do a simple fix now, get the Marine Board on board six months from now, and then have to take our simple fix out and invest in a whole other thing. So while we definitely need to look at addressing this, I don't think it's something that needs to be such a quick process move forward.
I would like to, Mr. Christensen, I do have the map you sent me, uh, with the drawing on it. Can we at least move forward to expound on that a little bit with ODFW and, and Marine Board? And see if they will, you know, map out something down there with some kind of, uh, engineering behind it?
Yes, I'm trying to build like a community team right now with Department of State Lands, US Army Corps of Engineers, ODFW, Lower Rogue Watership, Watershed Council. And I'm trying to get to see what the support is. And my thought would be is, if there was political support on your end, unified with moving forward with this project, and we were able to get public support, which ODFW thinks there's a huge amount of public support, um, it's a worthwhile project to try to move forward. I'd much rather spend money for a percentage of a grant for, for it to have a model facility.
Well, it would have my support as I see it right now. It would have my support. Good work, both of you.
As long as it's within what we can do.
Thank you for your work on it. Given the hour, uh, we're gonna need to break for...
Did the sheriff have something?
John, Sheriff Ward, did you have something you needed or?
Well, I could make a comment, uh, just as an interesting party. I've been a fisherman, I was born and raised here. I had my own boat when I was fifteen years old, so I've been using that boat ramp since I was fifteen years old. Uh, you don't have a lot of room there. Uh, the, the most that I've seen, the parking there is, is trying to squeeze in there is parking off the sides of the ramp, which is not conducive to people backing in and out of there. So you're looking at maybe three spots up there at the top of the ramp and a couple, um, over there where the, the property is owned by the county, given to a private person who owns property there. And then that property owner sold it back to, because, you know, it's a long story. But that property's still being used by the property owner. So you don't have any actually access there unless that property owner was told you can't park there, so. His equipment. But anyway, uh, I would be against closing that ramp down too. It's been in poor shape for a long time. It's, it's not bad when it's high water, but when it starts water dropping is when you back your trailer in and it drops over those, uh, pilings and busts an ink, uh, uh, an axle or, uh, a tire, so. But we've been dealing with that. Most guides, most people who use that property know that's how you have to operate that thing, so. But it definitely needs to get fixed, but expanding the property around it, I don't know how you're going to do that without buying some property that who owns it there, so.
Okay, thank you. Given the hour, let's go ahead and break for lunch. We'll be back here at, uh, in one hour.
If yours is the next big idea and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it? If you're only your best when you can play more than you work? If inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern, be where the airports are as close as the beaches and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive and dine in a single day and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary.
We have these parks which are set up to protect and preserve biodiversity. That's challenging under any circumstances. But it certainly is almost impossible if you don't know what the actual biodiversity is in your park or the area that you're trying to conserve is.
A BioBlitz is a celebration of biodiversity. Biodiversity is the variety of life in an area. We don't know how much life and what types of life are here at Crater Lake National Park. The big obvious things we know about. But a BioBlitz is where we go out and look for a particular type of organism. This year, we're looking for beetles or the order Coleoptera.
The wealth of biodiversity that are in these parks, ninety-nine percent of it is something that could fit in your hand.
We can't save what we don't know exists. So if there's a beetle species out there that's very important and we don't know about it, we can't do anything to help it. That is the ultimate goal of the BioBlitz. It's a way that citizens can come here. We have volunteers that are here who are actually giving this information. They're using their time to help the scientists build a greater picture of what kind of beetles are here in this park.
Getting this sort of baseline data of what biodiversity is there, not only shows us what's there, which is just intrinsically interesting for its own purpose, but it also begins to set a baseline. And that baseline data set is what we then can use, and not just scientists, but the general public and those land managers, the, the stakeholders in that BioBlitz, can use those observations then on into the future to understand if things are changing.
It's not so much about counting number of species, it's more about seeing a fuller picture of the biodiversity. And the biodiversity is the variety of different types of organisms, different types of species.
I do believe that in their past BioBlitzes, that they have expanded the number of things they now had recorded from the park, but also confirmed that some of the things that were reported historically are still present. So even if it's not a new discovery for the park, it still creates another piece of data that tells us, yes, that thing still lives here and is still thriving or, or maybe struggling. But, but we begin to learn something about it. I think that has an intrinsic value to the park for its long-term future, but it also just has an intrinsic social value. When you ask questions about why do we have these parks? And there's lots of ways to answer that question. But one of them is that the parks are these areas where we, where we go to appreciate the wildlife there. And this is a way of tapping into some of that wildlife at all sorts of different levels. One of the key things besides the biology that's involved in these BioBlitzes is the interaction with the public. interaction with the public and the opportunity to educate the public about the biodiversity around them.
The citizen scientists are here working alongside professional scientists. And that allows them not just to connect with science here at the park, but connect with the greater scientific community. It's a real positive thing. We see all ages coming here and they're just acting like kids out searching for bugs, but they're doing real science at the same time. It's a great connection between this amazing resource and the people that live around it.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower forty-eight states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was though until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go. We just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bannon to Port Orford. We did nine UPEC farms, and it just gained traction and people loved it.
Langlois is less than five hundred people. It's very small. So we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're gonna send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know anybody else's, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan. And we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're gonna promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way, and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bannon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have and don't try to be something that you're not. It's gonna be hard. It's gonna take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
National parks are one of America's crowning achievements. After all, it was in this country that the idea of setting areas aside for preservation was born. They are a symbol of democracy and exist as places where one can appreciate the beauty and complexity of the natural world, free of human influence. In the past, national parks faced challenges brought on primarily by the industries and practices that threatened them. Today, similar challenges persist, as well as some new ones. High up in the Cascades, Crater Lake National Park remains a pristine natural area enjoyed by visitors from throughout the world. But in recent years, new circumstances have come to endanger the ecosystem of the park. Invasive plant species are beginning to spread and threaten the park's natural biodiversity. An invasive species is an organism that did not originate in an ecosystem and is often introduced by humans. In recent years, Crater Lake National Park biologists have documented a rise in the number of non-native plant species found within the park. Invasive plant species have various ways of spreading throughout Crater Lake National Park. Roads that have been built create pathways for seeds that may stick on tires and get thrown to the side of the road. From the roadways, visitors come from far and wide to see one of the world's natural wonders. With each visitor, the risk of introducing new species also increases. Many invasive plant species have evolved sophisticated methods of distribution through the development of various adaptations to their seeds. These adaptations allow some species to let the wind and even animal life do all the heavy lifting for them. As seeds needle their way through clothing and animal fur, they are carried and then dropped in various places around the park. There are many reasons why new species are entering the park at an increasing rate. One of the factors responsible are the effects brought on by climate change. Due to warming winters, the snow-dominated season of Crater Lake National Park is becoming shorter. Snowpack, that is normally around for most of the year, shortens the period of humid impacts, such as high levels of summer visitation and infrastructure maintenance and enhancements. With climate change increasing the frequency and severity of drought and lengthening the snow-free period, the factors that are disturbing the natural environment are amplifying. Snow melt, that would linger for most of the year, is melting much sooner than usual. Snowpack acts as a barrier to both plant and animal species. Native plant species have adapted to this environment and are used to completing their life cycles during short growing seasons. With the lengthening of growing seasons, native plant species are now vulnerable to increasing competition from invasive plant species. The risk of forest fires increases with rising temperatures as well. As growing seasons lengthen, so do fire seasons. Areas affected by forest fires open up new habitats for invasive plants to move in, creating areas where non-native plants can find solid footing in the competition against their native neighbors. Newly introduced annual grasses fill spaces of forests and meadows and act as a medium for fires, allowing them to spread farther and more easily than before. This means that not only are invasive plant species altering the existing environment, they create a domino effect that can speed up the process of change in the park. In the last three years, twenty-five non-native plant species have been discovered. With every coming season, these numbers are expected to increase. Amid growing challenges and limited resources, the invasive vegetation management team has been forced to prioritize the most aggressive species in the park. These Crater Lake National Park biologists are controlling non-native thistles from a remote area inside the western boundary of the park. These thistles were discovered late in the season, and park biologists are removing the seed heads so they will not spread farther and establish more infestation sites. Given how large an area these plants can envelop, controlling invasive plants can be a meticulous process, but it is the best way to ensure that these plants aren't able to spread further into the park. Road sides are another area of focus as they create literal highways for invasive plant species to take hold. By controlling invasive plants near the park boundary and along roadside, park biologists hope to reduce the amount of species entering and spreading in order to protect and maintain the natural state of the park.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun? To marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, three hundred sixty-three miles in all, of some of the most unblemished awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only thirty-one roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is. And what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the nineteen seventies. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state maritime museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing six hundred feet above sea level is the one hundred twenty-five-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over five hundred feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, haystack rock. Get your shots from the beach or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this two hundred thirty-five-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? Ten miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're seven hundred feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the nineteen thirties by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces twenty-five million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than eight hundred miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in eighteen ninety. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in eighteen seventy to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The ninety-three-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide... Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But walk cautiously. These organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second haystack rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The central coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns and, as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your all-American road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Fallweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition earned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field, with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays, and don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
All four of our otters were rescued otters. They were found out in the wild.
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yahats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay, where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yahats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hacita Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rododendrons along the road sides. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayuslaw River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon Dunes. But you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayuslaw River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Bandon tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this all-American road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There's little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves and the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So, you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria, ride a horse along the waves near Florence, pet a baby tiger near Bandon, hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature, and you don't have huge numbers of people, but you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
We've got a lot of obvious hazards here, but I think one of the greatest hidden hazards is that the weather can change really fast. It can be a total bluebird sunny day. Next thing you know, the clouds will roll in, reduce visibility to almost nothing. You'll get driving snow, blasting wind, and it can create a whiteout, and that's really dangerous to be out in, especially with the edge of the caldera right here.
There are also hazards such as avalanches and cornices throughout the park. A cornice is a formation of snow created by wind. It often forms over steep slopes and can be overhanging. They can easily be broken through if you're not paying attention.
Most of our popular skiing areas and our popular snowshoeing areas are either on or below avalanche terrain. So you want to be aware of the edges. You want to be aware whether you're above or below avalanche terrain. It's incredibly hazardous, and we do get avalanches all the time here.
Unstable snow cornices can kill. Cornices are difficult to detect and can collapse at any time. Stay 100 feet, 30 meters, back from edge of the caldera. Trees can be dangerous in deep winter snow. Tree wells are large cavities around trees that can be three to 10 feet deep. People can become trapped in tree wells and die. Tree bombs are large clumps of snow and ice that fall from tree branches. Tree bombs can injure or kill a person. Use map and stay on the trails. Don't venture off-trail unless you have a plan and are prepared to rescue yourself. Search and rescue response may not take place until the following day. Stay with a group and let a responsible person know your plans. Leave a detailed itinerary with someone you know. If there is an emergency, they might be the only person who can tell the National Park Service where you are.
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you. To the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry, and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagined. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the West Coast's best coast is open to you, and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County, and don't leave anything out.
We've got a lot of obvious hazards here, but I think one of the greatest hidden hazards is that the weather can change really fast. It can be a total bluebird sunny day. Next thing you know, the clouds will roll in, reduce visibility to almost nothing. You'll get driving snow, blasting wind, and it can create a whiteout, and that's really dangerous to be out in, especially with the edge of the caldera right here.
There are also hazards such as avalanches and cornices throughout the park. A cornice is a formation of snow created by wind. It often forms over steep slopes and can be overhanging. They can easily be broken through if you're not paying attention.
Most of our popular skiing areas and our popular snowshoeing areas are either on or below avalanche terrain. So you want to be aware of the edges. You want to be aware whether you're above or below avalanche terrain. It's incredibly hazardous, and we do get avalanches all the time here.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch or a rock or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe meeting type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before and after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective in trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways, and we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new design rumble strip will be just as effective at saving people from making an error and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we are actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the sound of safety.
The goal of the Mountain Hemlock Phenology Project is to take the pulse of Crater Lake National Park. This project will span several years and track the change in spring tree growth over time. We don't just want to know if the timing of spring at Crater Lake is changing. We want to know why it might be changing, so we will also be measuring snow depth around the trees. This is how you'll take your measurements in the field. First, find a branch on the study tree and focus on the end of the branch. We're only going to measure a section the size of our hand. Next, look for the buds on the branches. They are really tiny. The dried-up tan buds that look like tiny pine cones are pollen cones from last year. Skip over these. skip over these. You're going to be counting the tiny unopened buds. Early in the season, these will all be tan color. Later in the spring, the cone buds will turn purple and the leaf buds will become hairy. You'll use your data sheet to identify and count the buds. These are the tree's new growth. Make sure you count carefully, the scientists are depending on you. After counting the buds, help the ranger take a snow depth measurement at your study tree. Park scientists think that climate change may be affecting plant growth at Crater Lake. Mountain hemlocks are a tree species adapted to deep snow, and snowfall has been decreasing at Crater Lake. What do you predict? Will trees surrounded by deeper snow produce more or less new growth than trees surrounded by less snow? On behalf of the National Park Service and the global scientific community, thank you for helping us take the pulse of Crater Lake National Park.
How many letters? Five letters? Just think about what am I doing right now? Smile. Smile? Uh-huh. This is so easy.
Sign that doesn't have a rider on it, so we take our first test at this posted speed limit of 15 miles per hour.
Bob Weeks and Harley Bills are seeing more than their share of curvy roads these days. Their job is to drive every section of highway in Region 1 several times. All this driving back and forth...
The old limits were set back in the 1930s and 40s and were changed very little until just recently. So now our limits are taking into account newer vehicles, a little bit more aggressive driving style, and so those limits are going up.
And going up in a big way. This is Eric Leeming, a traffic devices engineer with ODOT. He's driving an ordinary car with some extraordinary tech onboard, a GPS device that records data as he maneuvers every curve in the road. Back at his office, Eric can upload the data recorded in the car and special software determines exactly the right speed for every curve, every time. Most speeds will increase by 5 to 10 miles per hour, but in some special cases, it's much higher.
The state has a deadline of 2019 from the Federal Highway Administration, but with 8,000 miles of roads to investigate and potentially thousands of signs to change, they're not wasting any time, they're getting out there right now.
Now we're going to W113.
About 800 signs along this section.
That's a lot of signs.
It's a lot of signs. If it's a 35 mile an hour corner, you should be taking it at 35 miles an hour.
America's 3,069 county governments provide fundamental services for building healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. We are an intergovernmental partner, implementing federal and state policies at the local level, often under strict rules and funding constraints. County governments, through the National Association of Counties, engage federal policymakers on a range of issues like transportation, infrastructure, health care, public safety, and public lands management. All of these issues are vital to our nation's quality of life and our long-term prosperity. Decisions made by the White House, Congress, and federal courts have a major cascading impact on our ability to lead our communities and pursue a better future. Let's look at why federal policies matter to county government and why county government matters to America. Counties provide vital services that keep our communities thriving and secure. We own and maintain 45% of roads and four out of 10 bridges. We own more than a third of the airports and hundreds of hospitals and thousands of courthouses, jails, 911 call centers, and libraries. We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called 911 and no one answered? What if you couldn't reach your medical facility because roads and bridges were in disrepair or never built? County governments are an indispensable part of the infrastructure and services that keep residents safe and connected. But with very limited revenue options under most state constitutions and laws, counties must make every penny count in order to fulfill federal and state mandates and required responsibilities. Nothing is more basic in our society than essential public facilities like schools, hospitals, airports, jails, bridges, and other infrastructure. Yet proposals have surfaced to eliminate or scale back tax-exempt municipal bonds. For over a century, municipal bonds have been the lifeblood for our nation's public infrastructure, helping finance more than $3.7 trillion in essential projects. If tax-exempt municipal bonds were eliminated or scaled back, county governments and our residents would face billions in new costs when financing vital facilities. Additionally, counties rely on MAP-21 and the Federal Highway Trust Fund to complement local transportation financing resources. With growing demands and mounting costs, we need a reliable federal partner to invest with us in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness. We need a long-term legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't collect sales taxes and Main Street businesses that do. County governments provide support services to federal public lands, touching 700 million annual visitors. We lead search and rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the U.S. and impact 69% of counties. Because federal land is exempt from local property taxes, counties depend on PILT, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Program, to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools Program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping common sense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the U.S.-proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government, and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work.
Counties matter. Counties serve nearly every American every day. Urban, suburban, and rural, counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain 45% of the nation's roads and four out of 10 bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems. We help fund police and sheriff's departments. We own and operate local jails, 911 call centers, and mental health facilities. Counties create healthy communities. We invest more than $80 billion in hospitals and medical services each year. Counties matter because we invest in the lives of residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live and work. Counties are the building blocks of state, regional, and national economies. We support housing, recreation, and economic development. And we do so much more. From issuing birth certificates to administering elections, counties employ more than 3.5 million people. In total, we invest more than half a trillion dollars in our residents and our communities every year. Counties provide essential services we all depend on every day. That's why counties matter. Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly.
So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay?
Happens to the best of us.
I think we might need two more minutes. Good job, good job.
I did, I activated it. We don't have, still don't have the director. Luis says, "Have you seen Julie?" Smells her?
Can I say one thing before we get started into the agenda? In the meeting though?
Okay. All right, we're back on record here. It's 1:05 on Wednesday, the 23rd. Commissioner Gold?
I have been talking to several people on the Revenue Task Force, and they really want to know what's their job, are they of any value if we're having a workshop? Because originally, they were tasked with coming back with possible revenue solutions to us, so I don't know whether any of them want to speak to this issue.
They're on H on the agenda today.
Yeah, they're on the agenda.
Are they? Okay. I won't repeat myself, but maybe they want to talk at that time.
You had a busy lunch.
There we go. All right, we're on F, regular agenda, number five. Council Huddle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and essentially, this is a second reading of an emergency ordinance, and by emergency ordinance, it means it's effective upon passage, repealing 1701, thereby eliminating the position of county administrator effective upon adoption. This is continued from the January 9th meeting. The law requires two readings, two weeks apart. So really, I'll just read it by title only. It's in the matter of an ordinance repealing Article 1, Division 17 of the Curry County Code, eliminating office imposition of Curry County Administrator. So unless there's any questions, I don't have anything else to add. Seek a motion to approve the repeal.
Do I have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Have a second. Hearing no second, I'll second. Any further discussion or comment?
I think I made myself pretty clear on this, why I'm against it, so I won't comment further on it.
Any other further comments? A question?
Aye.
No.
Aye. All right, getting on to number six, delegating an administrator functions to the Director of Operations. Council Huddle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and essentially, this is, for lack of a better word, what people call housekeeping. Aside from the ordinance creating the position and title of the county administrator, there are also several just lesser actions, orders, resolutions, things like that that were done. This lists a few of them. We have a separate order where the county administrator can approve OLCC permits. We have a separate order where the county administrator is a contract administrator on the CCECIT contract, and there's similar things like that. So this is a blanket order, amending those orders and policies and delegating those, you know, lesser administrative functions to the Director of Operations, nevertheless subject to any limitations in the Director's of Operations job description, you know, because that has some differences in lesser authorities than the county administrator. And so it's really just a simple order, delegating certain functions to the Director of County Operations. The past supplemental actions, delegating authority to the county administrator as listed above, and otherwise now be considered delegations to the Director of Operations effective immediately unless limited by Director of Operations job description. So just seek a motion to approve that.
Do I have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Do I have a second? Hearing no second, I'll make a second. Any further questions or... Any further questions or comments? A question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, number seven on the regular agenda is TLT transient lodging tax imposing it. Council Huddle?
I have a question for the board. This is a second reading, and there was just a little bit of discussion earlier, and I know we're going to have the Citizen Revenue Task Force. If you recall, the history of this is that it was actually recommended to this board by the Citizen Revenue Task Force, and I know they'll be presenting, and we heard an earlier discussion by Commissioner Boyce. What I think, at least for the purpose of this meeting, is we just take this item out of order and have it after the Citizen Revenue Task Force discussion, so you can then, you know, get clear understanding of what the goals of the Citizen Revenue Task Force are. We've had the presentation by Ron Crook. You've seen this before, it's been a recommendation of the Citizen Revenue Task Force, and I thought Commissioner Boyce wanted to, you know, consider this matter further. So at least for today, after that, and then you can then decide if you want to continue it, table it, vote on it, et cetera.
Are we looking at seven and eight?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chair.
And we'll just move them down?
After H, I think.
After H, okay, we'll move them past H. So we're going to do F, seven and eight, past H. Commissioner Boyce?
Yeah, just a quick question for you, Mr. Chair. Hoping the board might be amenable to a discussion which might be a preliminary workshop, and I assume that that is legal and acceptable, but I know that might not be the case.
Well, I don't know as that will have any bearing on actually, you know, getting this to the ballot. I think you're looking at how we, you want to look at how to move, you know, another issue onto it as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe two.
But will that stop us from moving this one forward today? I don't think so.
Fair enough, thank you.
All right, thank you. Number nine is BOC minutes no longer required typed transcript. Basically, I'm one of those that believe that we have plenty of transcribing done between the videos that we do and the audio that we do. I understand that we need to do general minutes on subjects and topics, and also on vote. So I would like to make a motion that we only need to do the video and audio and no longer have to do the typewritten transcripts that JJ does, the administrator does. I'm sorry, the...
Staff chairs.
Staff chairs.
I'll second with discussion, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gold?
I just have one point of discussion, and that is, our audit is always flagged if we don't have the minutes. That's according to Louise. True, false?
Louise Colstrom, County Accountant. We've had this discussion before, we've had this discussion with our auditors, with the previous board. So you might not know that our auditor's position is if they don't have written paper transcripts of the meetings, they will either do them themselves and charge us for it, or they will pay somebody that we will be charged for to watch our videos to get the essence of the business of the county to be included in our audit.
And after speaking with several different people, and not only at AOC, but locally here, I'm to understand that it's the essence of the meeting is what they require, not the actual transcribed minute by minute.
No, they just want an essence of the meeting, but it does have to have a written form.
Well, I understand that, and that's what I'm saying, is I'm actually saying that I'd like to do the essence of the meeting, I just don't want, I don't think it's no longer necessary to do the entire transcript of it.
No, and that...
That's not what I understood from your motion.
That's not what I understood from your motion either, so...
Mr. Chair? If I may, yes, as Ms. Colstrom said, we've had this discussion many times. I'm very thankful that you brought this up, because I've been yelling in a deep, dark tunnel on this, and with all due respect, and this will save the county tremendous money. In other discussions, we have had a reference, could be one page, that just simply goes to the portions that the auditors may need.
Exactly.
And I think, if you want to amend your motion, I think that's been the discussion that we have had in the past. And again, on the emphasis of serving, certainly complying with the laws, certainly doing what's in the best interest of our citizens. Number three, saving money, I think that, and staff time, we're on the right track, and we've already, again, wasted two years. And she's got her hand up, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Gold?
Okay, we had agreed earlier just to do the very basic on the minutes. It got expanded. I'm not for expanding it, I'm for keeping it short, sweet, and to the point. We want to know the motions, whether they passed, and...
Discussion points.
Main discussion points, and that would be it.
Commissioner Boyce?
Forgive me, Commissioner Gold, but you've never communicated that, to my recollection in the past. It's always been, the law says we have to do both, even though we've had references to specific laws, reference to the state of Oregon, which does nothing in writing, and here we are, a small county with limited staff, I've not, please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't recall you ever saying, hey, we're going to simplify this, to the contrary.
I believe I've heard Ms. Gold make the statement that she wants...
Then how did we lose the vote on that? Time after time.
It was voted on to have them simplified, but...
No.
But there was a commissioner who refused to approve them unless they were almost verbatim.
Do you have a motion? Well, I'd like to amend my motion to make the minutes as simple, the transcribed minutes as simple as law allows, and therefore having a library backup of the audio and video files, I think that is well within the parameters of the state law and the ORS regs. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 10 is Annual Strategic Plan Discussion, and basically, I would just like everyone to know that I would like to see, and I've talked to several people, because I'm not a politician, this is my first time sitting in a county government chair, I've sat on board, other boards, and I've never seen a county or heard of a county running without having a strategic plan for the county. It's been talked about here time after time, and I would like to move quickly and with the upcoming budget schedule that we're going to have, try and start forming a strategic plan for the county so that we can have our eyes wide open when we get to budget hearings. Commissioner Gold?
I think this is a good idea. I think we need to know where we're going within the financial parameters that we have. I have no problem with that.
Commissioner Boyce?
Well, if it includes spending discipline, that's not been characteristic of the board in particular the last two years, I'll work night and day to help you on it, and I have also offered to the board the potential of other people that are very experienced in this matter, or this approach to wise government, prudent government, and I think they'll be available and very affordable.
And I would also like to offer our Budget Committee members that any direction that they can offer us would be helpful. So I would like to direct Director of Operations, Schmelzer, to move forward with the planning of getting this organized and done. Make that motion. Do we need, or council?
Doesn't hurt to have a motion, it sounds like it's direct staff to work on a strategic plan, primarily the Director of Operations lead that.
So...
Goodness, said it better myself. So move, Mr. Chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number 11, Request for Salary Restoration. Council Huddle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and this item, there's been some discussion about the January 30th Budget Committee meeting, Wednesday at 9 o'clock, I think, here, and one of the items for that meeting would be a request for the restoration of the commissioner's salary back to the historic levels. Just a brief history, last couple of budget sessions, they were, the salaries were reduced even below those recommended by the Salary Board, by Compensation Board, and so, because the composition of the board is different now, and early in this term, the board, Commissioner Boyce read a description for the commission, and then also, we eliminated the position of the county administrator, and the board was restored to its liaison positions, both internally and externally. So this is just a request from the board, and the Budget Committee needs a written per statute, the Budget Committee has to approve any change in salary once they've been fixed, and also, they need a written request. So this is just a draft, a written request for the budget from the board, and I don't know of any other way for the board to act other than to take a motion and a vote, so this is a request from the board to put this on and to make the formal request to the Budget Committee. I'm sorry, Louise, do you want, so Louise Colstrom is here, and I had requested that we have the supporting information, and I, again, this was prepared last week, and anyway, if you have any questions, I think in the packet there's a request to the Budget Committee, and then it, oh, thank you, I'm looking at page two of this item, number 11, and this is a draft, and it has, if you look on page two, it says, "Need Information," and XXXXX for dollar amount. So, we're looking for the board to actually say, what is the request? So it says, "Further attached is information to identify sources of the funds to pay the restored salaries. The requested base salary for each commissioner position is XXXXX." So we'll need the board to talk about it, get a number that they want the Budget Committee to seek, and maybe we also add, you know, perhaps we could say, "Subject to change," you know, once you get it, but they at least needed some request from you.
Ms. Colstrom, what was the historic number that's been paid in the last five years?
The next handout has the commissioner's salary rates.
The next, page down, page three, I believe?
Yeah.
Curry County Compensation Board, from 2018, says that?
Oh, that's the next, the next page after that.
Do you have an...
I don't have another page.
Do you have?
I don't have the handout.
It's on your computer, it should be in packet number 11.
Nothing's coming up on my computer compared to the beginning from about 10 minutes ago, so, on the whole agenda, I'm not sure what has taken place here. Excuse me, it comes up, but I can't get them to download on any of the separate items, so, can I look over your shoulder, Mr. Chair? Maybe that'd simplify our time here.
I'm not sure this is the one, though, either.
It says commissioner's salary rates at 118, 2019.
118, 19, yes, mine's on its sides.
Okay.
And that is, yeah, that's a sideways one, the one page up from that, as you can see it, the Curry County Compensation Board, if you scroll up one page.
Okay, I have that.
And that says, they met on May 7, 2018. Oh. I... Microphone, mic off, I apologize. And there you see they have a recommended commissioner's salary at that time of 68.6, $68,600. And then, I think what Louise is going to present is, aside from that recommendation, what the actuals have been, and that's the next page. I just wanted to kind of preface Louise's comments with that background. 11.
I wonder if I can get on that one?
And then I think you just roll your scroller down on that one.
I'm trying to roll my scroller down, there it goes. Okay, so this was the Compensation Board when they met on the Budget Committee, with the Budget Committee on May 7, and they made these recommendations. Just to be clear, the Compensation Board looks at like-sized counties, they go through all the elected officials in those like-sized counties, and they make a recommendation on a salary level based on their research. The board, or the Budget Committee, is not required to adopt these, these are just recommendations, and at the meeting, none of these recommendations, I believe, were accepted by the board. I think they did do a increase in, a couple, I can't remember, they did an increase in a couple of the elected officials' salaries or their insurance.
Sorry, that bill, you might have to come up if you want actually...
I believe that we did increase their salaries, but I don't think they were these recommended levels.
So we're not, are you, we're not here to talk about the other elected officials?
But this is the background on where this information comes from.
Okay.
So the next one, and...
Colstrom, if I could, what was the number that they, you said they weren't, they didn't accept that, what was the number that was...
The one, the recommendations for commissioner's positions was 68,600.
I could see that, but you said that they didn't...
I believe they added $1,000 to certain other ones, assessor, clerk, and treasurer.
That's it.
That would be 2,000 to the clerk, to treasurer, and the assessor, I believe.
And I don't know how to turn this. I don't know if I can. Okay, so, right under where it says commissioner's salary rates, there's, I put that there's three different choices. One is where we are currently, and that is that two commissioners are at $10,000 per year, and one commissioner at the current approved rate, less $20,000 a year. And the next line is the approved rate, and that is the commissioner's salary rate that was approved during the 1415 Budget Committee, approved the rate of 66,469 per year. So if you go back up to that line, that one commissioner gets the 66,469 minus $20,000 a year. The recommended rate, like we just saw, in May 2018, is 68,600. So the calculations for that, so for the last half of 2018, 19 fiscal year, the current rate will cost 57,567, and that's where we are in our budget right now. We've already paid half of that, we've got a half a year to go, and it will cost us another 57,567. If you look at the three commissioners and do a half-year pay on the currently approved rate, which is 66,469, the last half of the year will cost 130,777. And if you use the Commission Board's recommended rate, it would be 134,388 for the last half of this year, increase in cost.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Council Huddle?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So essentially, this is, that's what, just to clarify or repeat, perhaps would say it differently, we're only talking about from January 7th to June 30th here, of this, so we're only talking about a six-month period of commissioner's salary restoration, at least that's the proposal, because, you know, the change is based on the new composition of the board, and then the renewed duties and whatnot after we rearrange the organization. So, and then, going forward from that time, we go through the same process on an annual basis. The Compensation Board comes, they'll look at it again, and the Budget Committee will look at it, but what the state law says is, once we fix it, which we did back last June, or July, when we did the budget, June, we can't change the salaries again, they can't be increased without the Budget Committee approving. So, this is only for the six-month period, and then it'll basically cost somewhere between 73 and 76,000 additional dollars this next six months, is what, that's the ask or the cover, what we'd need to cover this request.
I'm fine with that, right there.
So what we need to do to fill out the...
Oh, the page up above.
The page up above.
So Louise, if I'm not mistaken, we're looking for each commissioner's position be at 68.6, which is the X is at the bottom there, the requested base salary for each commissioner's position is 68.6, I think, and then...
And the commissioners could request to just go back to the last approved rate, which is 66,469.
I'm fine with that.
So...
Likewise.
Okay, so 66,400?
Yeah, the 66,469. If that's what their request is going to be, is to go to the last approved rate.
That's from the 20, did you say 14 or something like that?
The last time it looked like I could find that it was changed was the 1415 Budget, which would have been the recommendation in May of 2014.
Okay, so those, those X's should be 66,460.
469.
Okay, so we'll fill that in. And then Louise, you have the information to identify sources of funds? Because I think my understanding, after talking to the Chair of the Budget Committee, is where is this 73,000 going to come from? Will you be able to provide that information when we submit this request to the Budget Committee?
I can provide it now if that's the desire.
That would be great, too, sure.
We have, we have settled several contracts. And we also have given the non-represented increases in salary and insurance. And so where is that plus this going to come from? Plus the contract we're actually still negotiating. And I guess my recommendation is, the only place that we really have to go is, we had a much larger carryover than we budgeted for in this fiscal year. The amount is somewhere around $1 million because of the SRS and PELT money that was received unexpectedly during last year. That same amount will probably, or a little bit more probably, will be received this year sometime this spring. And I would recommend that we budget for an increased carryover balance revenue to cover all of these payroll cost changes.
So is there a motion to approve the letter with the amendments?
I'll make the motion.
Discussion. I've been waiting patiently.
Go ahead.
Here you go, second.
Pardon me?
Are you going to second for discussion, or?
I'd rather not, until...
I'll second for discussion.
Commissioner Boyce?
So on the 19th of December, I presented to the Budget Committee three documents that from July 1 on, decided that was taking over my objections, to the extent of $20,000, which is, I think, about $1,600 a month. My legal fees for the ridiculous lawsuits that I had to combat. All the travel I did, which was still under the 1415, excuse me, 1516 travel budget. I paid out of my own pocket. And so I'm going to present this again to the January 30 Budget Committee, because I want to be reimbursed. I may give the money back. But there's a principle here that is really wrong and is political, and the judge saw through it. So I don't know if this is the wrong timing. Go ahead, Council Huddle, because I'm sure you've got some good input here.
I'm trying to, thanks. I do want to, I do want to help the board, you know, move forward. You could amend this motion to include the items Commissioner Boyce is looking for. You could establish this as a base and then consider his separate request if the board wanted. Now, also, by the way, if I could, Commissioner Boyce, let me, let me talk about what we're talking about here. And we're talking about here, a request for a salary increase.
I understand.
So the travel reimbursement request, we don't need to go to the Budget Committee for that, I don't think. We're only dealing with the statute that requires any salary request to go to the Budget Committee. So the other items, you may be able to handle in a different procedural way. Not, I don't want to discount your claims to those in any way, shape, or form. But we're here looking for a formal request to the Budget Committee under this statute that says if we're going to change salaries now. You mentioned earlier in December, you, I've been writing these notes down. You mentioned something about taking a salary over objection or something. This, this, this item that we're doing now is only going from January to June of this year, 2019. If I'm understanding you correctly, you're, are you also thinking there's, you are, you took lesser salary for the period from last June to January as well?
Would be July 1.
Right, and so are you...
Through all the consecutive months.
Right, so are you looking for a retroactive salary?
Absolutely. And you mentioned just a minute ago, my position is, it's not a salary increase. It's what we had agreed on with the voters, with the Compensation Board, give or take. And so it's, it's a real principle here, and I think it would be wrong. And I've stated that more than once. I was outvoted. I don't know if that's legal or not, but I do believe it was wrong.
Here's, here's what I'd propose. I think we have really two different questions on the salary request. And I did not write up, in the materials, I did not write up this to reflect a retroactive for yourself. You can either do that as a friendly amendment to this. I don't have the numbers for that, and I don't know if Louise does or has the supporting documents. But I, I would have to guess, if we're talking, if I could, you, you took 20,000 less a year, which is, I'll call it 1,500 a month.
10,000 for six months.
Okay, 10,000 for six months. Thank you. So you're looking for, to get replenished another, an additional 10. Louise, in the fund that you're talking about with the, I can't remember what it's called, the carryover, is there also an additional 10 if the board want to consider?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the board has a...
Add that as an amendment.
A friendly amendment, whoever made the...
There's still legal fees. $4,000.
Right, so I do, this is where I want to...
On the 30th?
Well, this is where I want to just kind of separate the topics. You have several topics of funding requests you would like. Right. The one topic that we need to go by statute to the Budget Committee is only the salary.
Fair enough.
So the item here would be the salary.
Retroactive.
For you, I don't, I don't think it would be fair if Commissioner Pass, if you couldn't go retroactive. Commissioner Gold, it would be up to you if you wanted to also go retroactive.
You know, I made a campaign promise that I would work for $10,000 if there were administrator.
Right.
And I'm going to stick to that promise.
Because we had one in those last six months.
That's right.
I suppose that usually with the friendly amendment, the second has to agree. It might be quicker and easier if we just do this on one with the going forward. Next, Commissioner Boyce makes a motion for another 10,000 for his, and then you could vote on that. I'm just trying to figure out how to get past this little, do we amend or do we make two motions?
Why don't we make it two different motions? And we'll make a motion for this one, then we'll make a motion for the, for the arrears.
Good. Okay, so thank you very much.
So we've had discussion. Any further discussion? Question?
This is for the first motion?
Yes, this is what you see here.
Just for this, because we didn't change the motion. So this would just be for this here.
Aye.
Go ahead.
That would be a quorum of the Budget Committee if we...
No, this is not, this is not, we're not worried about the Budget Committee here.
Bill Strowski, Chair of the Budget Committee.
Sure.
I want to understand, so you want, the Budget Committee's going to vote on a possible raise for the remaining of this year. You also want the Budget Committee to review Mr. Boyce's request for back pay? Is that what you're also saying?
That's the next item, I believe, on this one. But right now, we're just voting on from January to June of 2019. And then there will be a separate motion, I believe, for January, back to, January 2019, back to June of 2018, for Commissioner Boyce, in the amount of approximately $10,000. So...
And you want the Budget Committee to...
Well, again, the board, if the board votes, then those will be brought to the Budget Committee for consideration.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I have one. Aye. Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. So now, I believe, we're looking for a motion to have a request to the Budget Committee to retroactively replenish Commissioner Boyce's salary to the historic level from July 1, 2018, to January 7, 2019.
And I'll make that motion.
January 6.
6, thank you, in the amount of approximately $10,000.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
So we will bring, we will have two letters prepared to go to the Budget Committee on those items. Now, Commissioner Boyce, for the other things, the travel, the lawsuit expense, those kind of things, those don't have to go to the Budget Committee. But, and it might be that you, the Director, and myself, and maybe Ms. Colstrom, get together to see how exactly that can be handled between, it's essentially between you and the county, more or less.
Good enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to G, Manager's Report. Number 12 is positive determination for the Enterprise Zone, Council Huddle.
Well, thank you. I don't really have a lot to add for this. The document kind of speaks for itself. But essentially, this is a report. As you know, we had a big discussion and several meetings on the Enterprise Zone application. And this is a memorandum decision from Art Fish to Chris Cummings, where on January 10, 2019, after reviewing our materials, they made a positive recommendation. It says it's a confirmation of positive determination. That's on page, well, it's three, or it's page three on this one, digitally signed by Chris Cummings. So the State of Oregon has made a positive determination on our Enterprise Zone application. It's just information for the board. There's no activity or voting needed on this. This was just a report. So I have nothing further unless there's any questions.
No questions? All right, let's go back. We're going to go to H. We're going to move F7 and 8 forward from there. So we'll go to F7 first.
They wanted to just backwards have the Citizens Revenue Task Force present, and then do 7 and 8.
You are, you are right, Chair.
I'm no longer the Chair.
I misspoke.
That's okay. That happens.
Carl King, Nasega Beach. I drew the short straw. I'm the Chairman of the Citizen Revenue Task Force. This was a task force suggested by members of the prior board. The board advertised for applicants for several weeks. The board appointed every applicant who applied. And we started, and we've had, I lose track of how many meetings. I believe we have nine members, although one has, I don't think, been present for any of our meetings. The TLT that is before you was a proposal that we gave priority to at the request of the Event Center folks that they'd been already working on. And at the same time, we decided that we would move forward with what, for lack of a better term, we've been calling a big fix. From the beginning, we have spent a lot of time on the TLT. We've taken input from Mr. Huddle, his county council, as to just what could be done in answering the question of why should we ask the voters, again, to increase the amount of tax revenue handed over to the Board of Commissioners? And I think we came up with a pretty good solution. The 50% of the 70% for the Event Center has an introductory clause. And it says, I don't remember the exact words, but it says, "Upon approval of the BOC." So, you know, that is not an, a in perpetuity allocation of that revenue. And the task force was unanimous in its recommendation on the TLT, both of the ordinances that were prepared with a lot of assistance from Mr. Huddle. And we certainly urge the Board of Commissioners to vote to put those on the ballot in May. We have started discussions on other, smaller fixes, if you will. We learned at our last meeting about the marijuana initiative that was going on for the five counties. And certainly, that is something, I think, if the whole task force was here, we would all support seeking an advisory, if you will, from the voters to lend support for that. Because obviously, the first step of that is legislation. Without legislation, there's no question for us to decide whether or not to require permits for marijuana growers. I understand there is a number involved with that. I don't think Julie Schmelzer shared that number with us. But, and it's not as big a number as the counties that have the bigger grows, but everything helps. We have also, if you read in the press, started looking at a meals tax, if you will. I call it a meals tax because that's what I'm used to calling it. Some people have prepared food taxes. I think the only thing that the task force was looking at was a restaurant tax. And it was just the beginning discussion. We asked support from the Director of Operations to, and this, again, was at the last meeting, to find out from Curry Community Health, how many restaurants and where are licensed by the county, so we would have some sense of how many business people we would be imposing a burden on to collect a tax. And frankly, our thinking, I think I speak for the, although we didn't take formal votes on it, that the reason we wanted to narrow that down to a restaurant tax was to focus it more on tourists and not to affect those families in the county who, because of work requirements or what have you, rely on food trucks or takeout at the grocery store and the like for food that they need. On the big fix, we were well on the way of getting a sense of what that number is with the help of the prior administrator, interim administrator, Huddle. And I don't think Julie had had a chance to help us with this yet. We were gathering together numbers from the various departments as to what they need to function the way they ought to function as a going concern county. I know we had a communication from the Assessor as to how much money he would need in addition to what we normally provide for him in order to catch up with the assessing, so that the tax revenue would catch up, at least with inflation, and make up for some of the years when it wasn't happening. We asked and had a communication from the Sheriff as to what revenue he needs, in part to avoid the road fund being a source of patrol. And I always use the term for appropriate law enforcement, not adequate law enforcement. We should have for our citizens the appropriate level, not just the bare minimum that is necessary. And we had a communication from the Sheriff on that. And I think for most of us, in our heads, we were looking at a, a number, including making up for deferred maintenance and failure to reserve for replacements of about $3.5 million. And our discussion had started on looking at alternatives that would generate $3 to $3.5 million. And we were looking at several alternatives. At least one of our members reported back to us that in communications he was having with members of your board, that you folks had in mind someplace we should be going, or at least you folks had in mind things that we might think to recommend that you would not find acceptable. And at the last meeting, I guess the consensus was that we ought to come and talk to you. Now, frankly, I have defended on Facebook the Citizens Advisory Revenue Task Force as an independent group. There have been those who have posted on Facebook that, oh, this is just another attempt by the Board of Commissioners to hide behind a citizens group, who they've selected to come in and we advise them to do what they want to hear. And I have been careful to tell anyone who asks me that that is not what we're doing, that we are truly an independent Citizens Advisory Board, and that we will look at this and we will, and make an independent recommendation. And if the Board of Commissioners chooses to reject it, then so be it. But again, I think the consensus was, some of us were of the view that, you know, it's a nice meeting for two hours every other Friday afternoon in the Blue Room. But they had better think... had better things to do. So the reason we're on this agenda is if you, if the three of you or two of the three of you are inclined to go in a certain direction, tell us now if that's the direction you want to go on, and we will have a meeting and decide whether we should continue to function or we should just turn off our lights and go home and that the commissioners do what they intend to do.
Well, I'd like to say I will support nothing for this county that burdens the taxpayers and the taxpayers only. To look at things like transient lodging taxes and restaurant taxes, those don't burden a group of people in this county, the people that have moved their homes and their families up here and, and expect to have a, a normal finish to their lives. But I am for all, all for ideas. I am all for having advisory boards and task forces, whatever they be named, to give us direction. I don't feel, I don't believe the citizens of the county feel that you were appointed as a, at least the people I've talked to, that, that this task force was appointed as a, as a barrier or a cushion between the board. I think it's been very transparent. I would like it to stay that way. And the more ideas and, and revenue sources that you can bring to me, I, I love to hear, to have the opportunity to have smart people sit in a room and make qualified suggestions for things that we can all talk about and, and move forward, as long as it doesn't burden just the taxpayers of this county. It burdens everyone equally that uses the resources of the county. You have my ear. Commissioner Gold?
I'm all for having an independent committee. I'm also in favor of having, like Mr. Pash suggested, that it's not just the people who live here that are burdened with the taxes, not just property owners who are burdened with the taxes. I don't think, to be honest with you, that a property tax would pass. But I think you have an excellent, or we have an excellent opportunity to pass the TLT tax. We also have, I think, a pretty good opportunity to pass a restaurant tax because it's not, it's more of needs, not wants. If you're taxing things that people absolutely have to, they have needs, that's going to burden the people of this county. So I'm all for you continuing.
I will speak to one more thing. I was going to save my, actually for my closing, uh, uh, my closing comments, but it's apropos. I think all the citizens in the county realize that we've got to do something. If they don't, I would like to make them aware of it. I don't know how we can make them aware of it, but we need everyone in this county to understand we've got to pay the bills of the county. You've got a board in place that I believe will do the right things with the right direction with their money. But we have to raise funds in this county, whether it be the governor stepping in and raising our property taxes and dissolving our county. Is that what we really want or do we want to maintain control of Curry County? If we want to, we're going to have to come up with something. The marijuana tax, the TLT tax, a, a food or beverage tax in the county. I've suggested wildly that we look at putting a border toll of a dollar an axle on the southern border. What a, what a thing that would do for law enforcement. We'd have the most law efficient county in, in the state, and it would not burden the taxpayers of this county. These are all ideas that we just put out there and, and we come together as a group and collaborate on it, and hopefully we come up with some good ideas and get it done. But we've got to do something.
A toll booth is a great idea. The community I left in Massachusetts in the 1600s and 1700s, every time there was a plague, put toll gates at the three roads leading into the town so that we could keep out disease.
I personally don't believe that a toll booth on the south border would stop everyone that comes to Fred Meyer's and spends $300 a week in groceries and saves on an average of 70 to a dollar a gallon. And they see them bring all their truck full, bed full of five gallon gas cans in the bed of their truck and they buy 300 gallons of gas. I don't think a dollar an axle would stop that. And the facility is already there, so it would be a minimal footprint in the county. But that's just something to talk about for a later day. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you. You know, sometimes, yes, people laugh at the toll idea. They'll laugh at horses in the wilderness, eat ground fuel that's destroying our forest. But if we don't think out of the box, it's just going to be status quo and we'll be collecting our salaries and we won't get anything done. So I'm going to take another look at your toll. My, in all honesty, my first thought was, that's crazy. The more I think about it, it is worth research. It is worth, and if we go back, if we go six months from now and we look at what the, let's say eight months, they're going to be in session nine months probably, what the Oregon legislature will do with the spending that they have proposed in super majorities that are not favorable to rural counties and our issues and our difficulties? We're going to wish we had responded in a real aggressive way. I can't thank you enough, Mr. King, for the work that the committee has done. If I can divert just a little bit to the restaurant tax, that singles out a small industry in this county. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. My initial response to that, however, is this is an Ashland. Ashland's got 45 to 50 places to eat and they are in demand. They have access to supplies and labor that we don't have in this little, our restaurants don't have in this little county, as I'm sure you know. So they have, they're already at a competitive disadvantage. They're, Ashland has a five or six month season. Curry County has a four to four and a half month season. So I'm a little bit nervous about that, the small business person that's trying to keep people going and put out a good service, a good clean program. I won't rule it out, but I would ask you, that's my understanding, and by the way, the person you referenced talked to one of the board, that was probably me. I surely didn't mean to imply, I'm not saying that you said this, I was not speaking for the board. You know where I am on the research and review of a possible consumption tax and how that could, do you need to talk now?
No, I'm just waiting. No, 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 keep going.
I've spoken to-
A possible consumption tax we've got, you heard me say it earlier today, the opportunities we have here, do we want to walk away from that? Everything that we don't succeed in in finding additional revenue funnels down to the property tax people. And that is something that I'm going to fight against tooth and nail. When you look at the amount of money we could take in, tourism A and tourism B, and the amount of that, the, the percentage of that could go back to tourism and visitor promotion, everybody wins. And don't overlook, last thing, Mr. Chair, if I may, don't overlook either the amount of work that they will have in collecting those funds, the 5%, that Mr. Chivante and mentioned earlier today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, I certainly, Mr. Boyce, I, the first year of my practice, over 50 years ago, was the first real year the temporary sales tax went into effect in Massachusetts.
Go on, I'll bet.
And I represented small businesses trying to work to comply and then being audited for every nickel and dime they spent and they didn't think they needed to pay tax on.
You can see, Mr. Chair, where I might be just a little bit sensitive and protective of them.
Go ahead, Chair, Ms. Gold.
Okay, we received some information from Julie Schmelzer regarding the food and beverage total for 2017, and this would just be restaurants. And the total amount was 38 million or 38.3 million. And so I just kind of did some quick calculations. If we were to charge a 2% tax, that would bring us in .76 or close to .8 million dollars. If we were to charge a 3% tax, that would bring in 1.15 million. If we were to charge a 4% tax, 1.53 million, and a 5% tax would bring in 1.9 million. That's not chump change. And we could give those restaurant owners some, some sort of kickback or whatever you want to call it, 5% administration fee, so that they're not overburdened in, in bookkeeping processes.
Two points, back to my border, border toll. First of all, you don't make it, you make it so that the locals get a day pass, they get a day pass, they get the pass free, so it doesn't cost them anything. How many people have stayed out of San Francisco because of the $8 toll to get into San Francisco? How many people you think turn around and say, I won't do that? How many, how much money do you really think it would cost the county when you could have a sheriff's deputy sitting on that border watching everyone that comes across the border? How much drugs and crime do you think we could stop coming across that border? My final thought, thank you.
So- Again, we, we certainly urge you to put on the ballot in May. Our last suggestion at our meeting last week was to schedule a workshop with all elected officials to get everyone up to speed on just what it is and how it works. Because as elected officials, you're not restricted in supporting it from now until the, the vote. The county cannot spend resources. And so to the extent we have a window of opportunity to get as much support gathering the data together, it'd be, it'd be great to do it now. And as I said at our meeting, I think while there'll come a day when the county can't support things, I know a few people with cameras who can go out and record and put on your channel program that's in the nature of town halls to really advocate for this. And so, thank you. We'll, we'll get back to work.
I have a couple of public comments.
No, you have, you have suitable direction for you then. I think that is what you-
I think so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. King.
Mr. Hopkins, did you have some comments you wanted to make or?
Uh, are we moving on to seven TLT or are you still talking about it?
Oh, okay. Well, yes, we are getting ready to move on to seven right now.
So I just wanted to take a minute and before you guys make decisions on the TLT and the way that the current order is allocated the funds for it, one thing I have been hearing from members of the community is there is a sense that they feel the majority of this money is going to be spent at Gold Beach with the Event Center, and that's not sitting well with the rest of the county. One way to combat that is to consider that the Parks Department is one of the few departments that can actually spend this type of money throughout the county by developing new recreational facilities that promote tourist activities countywide. If money from the TLT was designated to the Parks Department, we'd be able to shift our focus from always looking at having to develop campgrounds first that are simply for revenue building to keep our department going, and we'd be able to make more non-revenue generating strictly for the enjoyment and expansion of recreational activities for our citizens and the visitors that come to our county. We'd be able to support new projects like hiking trails, fitness courts, biking trails, picnic areas. We'd be able to use this funding to fix the Bagnol Ferry boat launch in a real quality way. That would go a long way for our local fishing men. It'd be good for our local fishing guides, bring in more tourists for the local fishermen. And it might actually, knowing that that's what part of this money could be spent for, go a long way in helping get the local fishermen on our side in supporting the idea of passing this tax. We'd be able to invest in our own current campground facilities. We'd be able to expand on the amenities we already offer that cause people to come back to our county every year. For reference, some of our campers that stay at Boy's Cove, they tell us they spend at least $10,000 a year in our local economies, just in the time that they are at our campground. We have campers coming from across the state, across the United States and into Canada, Germany, everywhere else under the sun. It's a big draw. The county does own a lot of land. Not all that land is suitable for building a campground on. Not all that land is suitable for building a lot of things on, but they could be in the recreational field. That's why we'd be able to use this type of money, if we were designated any portion of it, to expand camping, expand recreational activities to the citizens, and that'd be a big boon for them to know that these things are going to be able to be funded throughout the county. Of the 70% that's for tourism, tourism related activities, currently the Event Center on the beach is getting 50% of that fund. If you guys decided that maybe it would be a benefit to add 10 to 15% to be designated to the Parks Department, still leaves the extra 40, 35% for all the rest of the county to be drawn against and everything like that. And at the end of the day, one of the main reasons the other communities like Ashland has been able to pass its taxes that they have in the last several years is because they put their parks departments on as being designated where that money's going to be spent. The idea is their citizens valued parks. We know the citizens of Curry County value its parks and recreation. We know that outdoor recreational tourism is a huge draw for this region. This would be a way for us to be able to expand on what we're already doing in a quicker, faster manner. We'd be able to build newer facilities, quicker facilities, and have funds available to us to use for match fundings. So just moving forward in my part, I think any taxes you guys are planning on pushing through, it would help if the Parks Department was allocated part of that fund. And before you guys vote to push it through with its current way it's written, maybe take a minute and decide whether you think you'll get more buy-in from the community knowing that 10, 15% of this is already allocated to the Parks Department.
All right. Commissioner Gold?
I just have one, one point to make. You said that there's some, some distress among the, the people in the county because they think it's all going to the Event Center, and I think that's going to be a matter of education.
Yes.
Because 50% is going to the Events Center, not all of it.
Well, and I think it might be part of the way it's kind of read. We say 50%, but it's 70% of the 100%, so 35% of that type of a thing. I think people are actually thinking the majority of this money is already designated to the Events Center, and they're also confusing it to where it's not, oh, it's designated to the Events Center, like Mr. Cook was talking about. There's going to be a lot that needs to be done to explain that it's not for the fairgrounds itself operation, it's for the Events Center.
Well, and I think the way that we write the, the ballot, for the ballot pamphlet is going to be really important so that this is, this is understandable.
And that's not in perpetuity either.
Yes.
So, so everyone understands that.
Yes.
And the fact that there's going to be a committee that's going to have representation from north, south, central, and an at-large member to determine how the rest of those monies are spent, I think that's going to be an important part of it also.
It will. Personally, I think also allocating this portion of this straight to the Parks Department to use for these things would also help as well, but-
Thank you.
You are a good advocate.
David Barnes?
Good afternoon, David Barnes. I, I looked through this whole plan. I'm an auditor by trade. I, I'm, my, the, the logo of my profession is trust but verify. You know, I just, I see, when you're talking about having campgrounds out here that charge $3, $4 a night, and you're going to charge a 7% tax, you know, what are we talking about? Five cents, 10 cents, you know, 14 cents for, for a camping trip? The, the amount of work that is going to go into separating that out, I see for people being difficult. By all means, I'm in favor of this. We have to raise money and we shouldn't be doing it on the back of our own taxpayers. You know, we should be, there's other money out there, you know. I, I wish Jerry Lynn would come forward and tell us where the boatloads of money that she was talking about during the campaign are located so that we can go out and get some of them. But, you know, I, I'm in favor of this. I, I, like Mr. King was suggesting, I think, I, and others have said, I don't think tying this to another tax is a good idea. This one has a good, that this one, I think, has a good chance of getting through. If you start tying other taxes on top of it, you muddy the waters and nothing happens and everything gets shot down. So, you know, I, my suggestion would be to leave this as just a standalone for the time being and, you know, if you want to, I, I think the marijuana tax, that's what drives people into the black market. You know, I, I was listening to Commissioner DeYoung talk about it this morning, and my God, it was like listening to the Old West where the big people get together and they buy the law and they buy the commissioners and they have the rules put in to drive the smaller people out of business. And that's really what it sounds like to me. So, you know, you, they'd say they got a big problem with black market, do this and you're just, you know, the, the fees he was talking about this morning, you're just going to drive more people over the edge. When I moved here four years ago, good quality marijuana was between 15 and $1,800 a pound. You know, and it costs $100 to have a pound of weed tested so that you could sell it at a dispensary. Today, a pound of really good pot is 600 bucks, and you're paying $300 to have it tested before you can sell it. You have your electric, you have water, you have fertilizers, you have your time. It's not worth it for small people anymore. So, you know, the more that we do to hurt the small people and drive them out, you know, it's, watch the Philip Morris's of the world are on their way and doing things like this only makes it easier for them to come in. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council Huddle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if we are moving on to the second reading of the imposition of the TLT, this would be, excuse me, item?
Seven?
Thank you. Seven on your agenda. So it's a second reading and essentially- So it's a second reading and essentially this, I'll read it by title only since it's been available by publication. "In the matter of an ordinance imposing a transient lodging tax, TLT, within Curry County, creating a promotion and tourism fund, providing for collection and enforcement, establishing penalties, and referring it to the people." Technically, the imposing TLT doesn't necessarily create all those funds. Those are in the administration. Let me take a look here. The use of the revenue, yes. So at least 70% of the revenue from the local TLT shall be used for fund tourism and promotion. So yes, it does create that fund, and that's by statute. And then no more than 30 can be used to increase local, other county services. So that is the TLT. If it's approved by the voters, this then gets referred to the voters. If this is approved by the voters, the effective date would be 1st of September 2019. If approved by the voters, May 21st, 2019. So that's all I have on the imposing ordinance number seven, Mr. Chair, unless there's any questions.
Questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item then is the second reading of the implementation ordinance. And this is the one that has had more discussion. And really, this one is our internal ordinance. It's something where we implement the tax that was imposed. We, this has provisions for collection, this has provisions for deciding on spending. Some of the key areas that you heard about on this implementing ordinance are found on page, I think it's 11 of your materials. Hold on a second, 11 of the ordinance, which is page 14 of your materials. This is called Section 8.02170. This is allocation of the funds. And again, so the fund, so, and again, there are two funds by the state law. 70% of the TLT has to go to tourism promotion or tourism-related facilities. And then 30% can go to general funds. So what the group that went around and talked to the community came up with was a split of the funds for different areas. And what it says is first, so this is for the 70% that goes to tourism and tourism-related facilities. First, subject to BOC approval. And this is where, when we say it's not in perpetuity, to the County Fair Fund. And the County Fair Fund is a fund of the county. And then the county has created the Fair Board to manage the Fair Fund. So, and then it has an event center account. So multiple things would have to happen for half of the 70% tourism-related facilities to go to the Fair Fund. Primarily, it would have to be approved by the board. And that would be an annual process by the budgeting where you allocate funds, monies to a fund. And then second, it says a remainder, which would be the other half, would be administered by the Tourism Promotion Committee. And you've heard the speakers talk about this committee would be representative. And it would have two members from the Northern School District, two members from the Central School District area, and two members from the Southern School District area, and then a one-at-large member. And they would annually conduct county-wide assessments of facilities, develop a plan. And then down at the bottom of this section, and it starts to show on, on page 12, it says the board, and that's the, I believe that's a Board of Commissioners, will, yes, will annually retain the TLT funds for tourism and tourism facilities until it has approved the performance of the committee. So the Board of Commissioners, you know, who are elected by the citizens, would have the, you know, say so on where these funds go. So that's really, but it has these two large principles. That it'll be controlled by the representatives and that you will turn over, like we do already, well, like we do with some of our funds, to the Fair Board. And then the other part is the 30% that can go to general county services. We have a language in here, and this is on page 16. It says, "Not to exceed 5% of the non-tourism TLT revenues may be spent on administration." So not to exceed, meaning it can be less than 5%, but no more than 5%. And then anything we don't spend on administration, it says the balance of non-tourism TLT revenues would fund the county sheriff patrol deputies. So, and I think the numbers show that that could be very significant. So really, that's the nuts and bolts of this. There are a tax review committee to see if people challenge their amounts of the tax. That's all very administrative. That's why it can't go to the voters by state law, has penalties. But really, I think the board is familiar with this. It's been reviewed by the Citizens Revenue Task Force. It's been recommended. It was presented to the board. It was adopted, excuse me, approved on the first reading. And so it's just for the board on a second reading.
Council, the Sheriff's Department portion of that fund, is that mandated to the Sheriff's Department every year?
It, this...
I mean, for me, that's important.
It, when you say is it mandated, this is an ordinance of the commissioners. So because it's not, this doesn't go to the voters, and this is what's called administrative, it's mandated, it's directed. But again, because it's of the commissioners, the commissioners have the power to change their own ordinances. But this is the way it's set up, and this is how it would be voted on by this board. But really, it would be in the hand of future commissioners and the citizens and whatnot for future administration.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gold?
Isn't there, I'm back to Council Huddle, isn't there something, a law that says that we can't tie the hands of future commissioners?
Well, on your own decisions, a lot of times there is. So, so again, that is, that is a general, a general law. Now, and that's why I said, and voters do not vote on administrative functions, which is what these are.
Well, just as a lot of ordinances are being changed right now as we speak, so...
No, that's an example. And that's what I was talking about as well. This is an ordinance by the commission, and a future commission could come along and change this. But what this is showing is the intent of this board with respect to the measures and the expenses.
I'm just, it's important to me that the voters know they're educated to what this money would be used for. And my vote will be that 25 or 27% will stay in perpetuity to the Sheriff's Department. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well said, by the way. But the details or specifics are not going before the voters. Is that correct? Did they?
So the administrative provision, there's a, there's a state law prohibition on voters voting on what's called administration. And so they don't decide spending very...
And you've explained that.
Yeah, I'll use an example. For instance, when I pay my taxes to the federal government, I can't say, "You have to not spend this on this program or you have to spend it on that program." But I think that's why, that's why that guy who tried to...
You've explained that in the past.
Okay, very good.
The verification helps. And so this is something we don't even have to decide on today.
I think for purposes of getting the first ballot on there, I think perhaps you don't have to decide on it today, but I think it might help the first one. But also, as we discussed, if you do decide on this today, there's no prohibition of you deciding, of talking about it once you do a study session, workshop, what have you, so...
So I make a motion as stated by Council Huddle?
That'd be for approving the second reading here.
For approving, yes.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are at Commissioner Updates and Comments. I've pretty much said my piece. I just, I just want to reiterate to everyone, there's a lot going on now in the county with, you know, searching for money and ways to fund this county. We've, I believe, we're, we've made large steps in getting a great team together to start to pull the county back together, looking for resources to build this county's infrastructure and to look to move the county forward in paying our bills. I would ask everyone to please take time and learn what we're doing, get involved in what we're doing, and understand this TLT tax. Make sure you understand exactly where it's going and why, that we are going to have to do something with our taxes. We are going to have to raise money to pay our bills. And I much prefer us as a county making those decisions than the state stepping in and them making our decisions for us. Thank you. Commissioner Boyce?
I need the turquoise mouse. I think I can reach it. Might be up at the podium.
It is at the podium.
New Couscure electric, thank you. Executive Director. We were saying goodbye to Roger Meter, who has been, oh boy, that is very sensitive, isn't it? So this is the Ruralite Magazine. Somebody may have saw this. He had his picture on the front page, and then the new gentleman is on the back. I'm trying to settle this down.
The other one.
Now, that's just size. How do we get to?
Minus.
Are you trying to scroll?
No, next photo.
Yeah, maybe that little arrow on the side there.
This one?
Yeah. Oh, no, that'll shrink that. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Well, anyway, the, his name is Brent Bischoff. And we had dinner with him last night. He is very community-minded. I think he's going to be a great, a great addition to the whole Couscure effort and very approachable, very knowledgeable. Something he did mention last night, he spent 25, 26 years on a submarine, I think. So pretty disciplined in military service in the Navy. Real quick, I've got a couple of things. Some could wait. We did meet with Senator Wyden yesterday.
Senator Wyden, Merkley.
Goodness sakes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Merkley. And I think he's starting to, he and his staff are starting to understand just how critical the fuels are and what we need to do to combat fires in Oregon. I think he's making some, some good steps, and so I'm very thankful for that. What I have here, a friend of mine sent this to me just on the beach down here, below the airport. And of all these trees, you'll see, I don't know why it's nowhere, there we go. This is not a normal winter debris. None of this, by the way, came down from the Rogue because of the Lost Creek Dam. It just gives you an idea. There's a South Jetty right there. And most of this is burned debris. Now frankly, I want the citizens to know, this could be from any one of four different fires going back as far as 2002 to the Biscuit Fire. The three or four inches of rain we had in a day and a half period. Now, how do I get to the next photo here? Right there. There's a piece burnt. Charcoal, again, that could be from four different fires. A lot of the wildlife that was destroyed come down. This'll sound terrible, but we're going to have, two years from now, we're going to have a great crab season because it's just absolutely disheartening, the amount of wildlife we lost. And especially the Cullin Dyke and Bulls. And of course, both those fires drain into the Illinois River, which goes into the Rogue, which dumps right in our city limits here for Gold Beach. Sorry about the mouse, guys. And again, this is a quarter mile from here. And the point is this too, and one more picture. This'll show you, show the people how bad the conditions are. That is beautiful soil that come off of the Illinois River drainage. You can't have good forest unless you have really good soil. And just a little side note, many know this, but for those that perhaps don't, the normal fires we have, which are generally good, burn at 1,200 degrees, 1,200 to 1,400 degrees. This is, the catastrophic fires burn at 2,000 degrees. So they destroy the soil for a long, long time. And so what happens when we have the good old coastal rains come in? Then you have tremendous sediment that goes into the ocean. And it's going to take years and years for that good soil to be, as you know, built back up. I think, there's eight, but I think one of them here is, whoops, excuse me, go down. So that would probably be from either the Cullin Dyke or the Cheko Bar. Same tree. That's it. I had an article, an op-ed in the Eugene Register-Guard on Saturday. I've had a lot of feedback on that. It's been all good. If you get a chance to read it, it'll be, I think Staff Cheswood already got it on the, got it on my portion of the county website. In concluding it is this. The Wildlands Act, and we heard some people from Port River yesterday speak on supporting that, wanting, it's primarily coming from Senator Wyden, but they also spoke in indirect challenge to Senator Merkley to support this. Basically, it does more wilderness. It locks up more territory in the county offices. So if you go straight east, I'm sorry, south of the Rogue River, and we lock up this wilderness, we're not going to be able to control fuels because there's no roads. As one of our public testimony people mentioned today, bringing that local workers into that, into those areas. But having a restriction on roads actually, and if you read my article, it challenges them to, please don't make the same mistakes where we are, we're not only going to be able to put these, we're not going to have the capacity to put these fires out, let alone the access. It will come north from the county offices to the Rogue. And you know my background there. I would just be heartbroken to see that happen. And so the Wildlands Act, Curry County definitely needs to, in my view, oppose that. So thank you, Mr. Chair and Board.
All right. Commissioner Gold?
Last meeting, we talked about the department head meetings. And it was determined that whoever attended those, one commissioner would come back with a summary of the meetings. So that's what I'm doing today. I attended the department meeting yesterday. Let me just give you a quick summary. Judy Smelzer introduced herself and told the group that she would be working on the following issues. One, presentation to the BOC on transient lodging tax. Two, a five-county tax on marijuana grows. Three, working with department heads and has asked them to do a quarterly report for the BOC and would like a two-week report from the financial department. The two-week report could be difficult because we only do monthly financials. Wendy Lang is having issues with the key fobs because they are not always working. And that can be a real problem because she is sometimes called in at odd times. She would also like to have a list of those who have master fobs so that they can be contacted in case of emergencies. Richard Christensen indicated that the road department is working on brush cutting along county roads as well as ditch maintenance. The road department also provided sandbags to the public during the storm last week for 25 cents a bag. They provided approximately 320 sandbags. The department now has 4,000 sandbags on hand for other emergencies. During the storm, there were a couple of rock slides that needed to be fixed. He is presently working on the county fleet of cars and suggested that department heads had input into the decisions that were being made about possible use for cars. Louise Colstrom gave out a budget calendar to department heads. Department heads have been requested to attend the January 30th quarterly budget meeting. And many of them were concerned that they would have to be there all day. And this would not be the most efficient use of their time. They would also like to know what specifically is needed and what is wanted so that they could be prepared for the meeting. Could the use of email be more efficient, was their question. Julie Swift said that the employee handbook needs to be updated now that there is no longer an administrator position. She indicated that this would not take a lot of time. All county employees now have their W-2s. And on 3/19/19 and 3/20/19, CIS will be given a harassment training and also a supervisor training. Shelley Denny indicated that the recorder's office is getting ready for two elections and that they have the new software for county ballots. Sheriff Ward said we now have a partial fix for the towers and that we still do not have full communication ability in South County. ODOT contacted the department and indicated that they had some spare parts that Curry County could use to keep us up and running temporarily. But he also said that we still need to go ahead with the implementation of a new system. And that's my report.
Okay, we're about to enter into an executive session. I'm sorry, Ms. Colstrom, go ahead.
Louise Colstrom, county accountant. So at the management meeting yesterday, there was actually quite a bit of discussion about the meeting on January 30th. And I did indicate to the department heads that I would discuss it with the board and get some clear direction on their attendance. I have written up an agenda, and it basically is approving minutes, discussion on any questions from the budget committee, review all those questions. And then a financial review of the December 31st, 2018 statements. Then after that, an action item for the commissioner's salary review. and then determination of the next meeting. Now, at the last board meeting last week, Board Chair, you did indicate that you wanted all the department heads to attend this meeting at nine o'clock and nobody's scheduled at any certain time. So their concern is, is exactly what are they going to be doing there? And do they all have to sit there and listen to each other instead of being scheduled in certain time slots?
Well, that's what I thought we talked about was, they would all be there at nine o'clock and then we could possibly do a schedule from there quickly, give them a direction of what we're going to look for from each department and then give them also an approximate time that they're going to be called back.
On that same day?
That's what I thought we discussed.
Because I don't think that anybody ever said anything about any scheduled times for anybody at that last meeting.
I'm certainly not in favor of having people sitting here all day, you know, waiting on us.
I don't think.
I would, maybe if we can coordinate some with Ms. Smelzer, what I'd like to do is have everyone there at nine o'clock so that we can get a direction on what we're going to look for from them. Because I would like to look for a strategic plan. We need to have something started. And that way there, we can give direction and then we can give an approximate time to come back and just keep checking in, you know.
Okay, so.
Or have someone go out and get them.
I think what we could have is like a blank schedule and then assign everybody at that time at that meeting.
Sounds like a good process.
Okay, then I think then we're prepared for the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we're going to enter into an executive session. Before I do, Council, do we need to clarify on the change for our next board meeting? That I wanted to go to a formal roll on our decision-making. I think it's a little bit confusing when people just hear "I" if they're watching a video on, or listening to an audio. They, do I hear an "I" and everybody says "I" and they don't know who it is? I'd like to clear that up by, in my experience, is we've always had a formal roll that JJ could call a roll.
I remember you talking about that and I think that is possible. And I know we've done that for items in the past, JJ, when you've, yep. So, yeah, that's a roll call vote, is what that's usually called. And so I think you could help remind us, when it comes time for the vote, you say question and maybe you can say, are we ready for a roll call vote? And then kind of tee us up pretty good. So I think it's possible and I think you could maybe help us.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't need to make a motion or a direction or any of that, I'm still new to this.
Oh, we have a question from.
As a practical matter, would you need a roll call that's unanimous?
I think, I think he's looking for a roll call on everyone.
On everyone, yes. That way there, the public has a clear knowledge of who it was. Ms. Smelzer.
Chair Posh, so JJ and I did communicate a little bit on that and I did tell him that there were some things I wanted to bring to a workshop for the board to just get consensus on things such as getting rid of the, or eliminating the 30-minute maximum public comment and things of that nature. So JJ just kind of held off until we can actually have that workshop. But it is something that we do want to discuss with the board and get more direction on at that workshop. We are hoping that we could have a workshop on Tuesday.
Okay.
So we'll follow up with the board on that and see if that's possible.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to enter executive session. This is on the union issues, negotiations, Council.
That's correct.
I know we have to notice what the executive session is.
That is right. It's 192-660-sub-2-sub-D. It's to confer with negotiating representatives for union negotiations. And unlike most executive sessions, members of the press are not allowed to be in this executive session. I think you and Julie and myself and Julie Smelzer, we changed the disc out. I'm not sure if we have the exec session disc or not. Can you maybe go grab that, JJ? Thank you.
Incidentally speaking, with Council up there, he said executive session discs.
... is the next big idea. And you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it. If you're only your best when you can play more than you work. If inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
We have these parks which are set up to protect and preserve biodiversity. That's challenging under any circumstances. But it certainly is almost impossible if you don't know what the actual biodiversity is in your park or the area that you're trying to conserve is.
A bio blitz is a celebration of biodiversity. Biodiversity is the variety of life in an area. We don't know how much life and what types of life are here at Crater Lake National Park. The big obvious things we know about. But a bio blitz is where we go out and look for a particular type of organism. This year, we're looking for beetles or the order Coleoptera.
The wealth of biodiversity that are in these parks, 99% of it is something that could fit in your hand.
We can't save what we don't know exists. So if there's a beetle species out there that's very important and we don't know about it, we can't do anything to help it. That is the ultimate goal of the bio blitz. It's a way that citizens can come here. We have volunteers that are here who are actually giving this information. They're using their time to help the scientists build a greater picture of what kind of beetles are here in this park.
Getting this sort of baseline data of what biodiversity is there not only shows us what's there, which is just intrinsically interesting for its own purpose, but it also begins to set a baseline. And that baseline dataset is what we then can use. And not just scientists, but the general public and those land managers, the stakeholders in that bio blitz can use those observations then on into the future to understand if things are changing.
It's not so much about counting number of species. It's more about seeing a fuller picture of the biodiversity. And the biodiversity is the variety of different types of organisms, different types of species.
I do believe that in their past bio blitzes that they have expanded the number of things they now had recorded from the park, but also confirmed that some of the things that were reported historically are still present. So even if it's not a new discovery for the park, it still creates another piece of data that tells us, yes, that thing still lives here and is still thriving or maybe struggling, but we begin to learn something about it. I think that has an intrinsic value to the park for its long-term future, but it also just has an intrinsic social value. When you ask questions about why do we have these parks? And there's lots of ways to answer that question. But one of them is that the parks are these areas where we go to appreciate the wildlife there. And this is a way of tapping into some of that wildlife at all sorts of different levels. One of the key things besides the biology that's involved in these bio blitzes is the interaction with the public and the opportunity to educate the public about the biodiversity around them.
The citizen scientists are here working alongside professional scientists. And that allows them not just to connect with science here at the park, but connect with the greater scientific community. It's a real positive thing. We see all ages coming here and they're just acting like kids out searching for bugs, but they're doing real science at the same time. It's a great connection between this amazing resource and the people that live around it.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean. And it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was though until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised, it's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's going to benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas. Outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bannon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms and it just gained traction and people loved it.
Langways is less than 500 people, it's very small. So we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're going to send people now and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know what anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help. So we came up with a mountain bike plan. And we also worked on designating a state scenic bike way. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang the last two years and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have and it's a balance. We're going to promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way. And it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bannon down to Brookings and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have and don't try to be something that you're not. It's going to be hard, it's going to take a long time. So roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
National parks are one of America's crowning achievements. After all, it was in this country that the idea of setting areas aside for preservation was born. They are a symbol of democracy and exist as places where one can appreciate the beauty and complexity of the natural world, free of human influence. In the past, national parks faced challenges brought on primarily by the industries and practices that threatened them. Today, similar challenges persist as well as some new ones. High up in the Cascades, Crater Lake National Park remains a pristine natural area enjoyed by visitors from throughout the world. But in recent years, new circumstances have come to endanger the ecosystem of the park. Invasive plant species are beginning to spread and threaten the park's natural biodiversity. An invasive species is an organism that did not originate in an ecosystem and is often introduced by humans. In recent years, Crater Lake National Park biologists have documented a rise in the number of non-native plant species found within the park. Invasive plant species have various ways of spreading throughout Crater Lake National Park. Roads that have been built create pathways for seeds that may stick on tires and get thrown to the side of the road. From the roadways, visitors come from far and wide to see one of the world's natural wonders. With each visitor, the risk of introducing new species also increases. Many invasive plant species have evolved sophisticated methods of distribution through the development of various adaptations to their seeds. These adaptations allow some species to let the wind and even animal life do all the heavy lifting for them. As seeds needle their way through clothing and animal fur, they are carried and then dropped in various places around the park. There are many reasons why new species are entering the park at an increasing rate. One of the factors responsible are the effects brought on by climate change. One of the factors responsible are the effects brought on by climate change. Due to warming winters, the snow-dominated season of Crater Lake National Park is becoming shorter. Snowpack, that is normally around for most of the year, shortens the period of humid impacts, such as high levels of summer visitation and infrastructure maintenance and enhancements. With climate change increasing the frequency and severity of drought and lengthening the snow-free period, the factors that are disturbing the natural environment are amplifying. Snow melt, that would linger for most of the year, is melting much sooner than usual. Snowpack acts as a barrier to both plant and animal species. Native plant species have adapted to this environment and are used to completing their life cycles during short growing seasons. With the lengthening of growing seasons, native plant species are now vulnerable to increasing competition from invasive plant species. The risk of forest fires increases with rising temperatures as well. As growing seasons lengthen, so do fire seasons. Areas affected by forest fires open up new habitats for invasive plants to move in, creating areas where non-native plants can find solid footing in the competition against their native neighbors. Newly introduced annual grasses fill spaces of forests and meadows and act as a medium for fires, allowing them to spread farther and more easily than before. This means that not only are invasive plant species altering the existing environment, they create a domino effect that can speed up the process of change in the park. In the last three years, 25 non-native plant species have been discovered. With every coming season, these numbers are expected to increase. Amid growing challenges and limited resources, the invasive vegetation management team has been forced to prioritize the most aggressive species in the park. These Crater Lake National Park biologists are controlling non-native thistles from a remote area inside the western boundary of the park. These thistles were discovered late in the season and park biologists are removing the seed heads so they will not spread farther and establish more infestation sites. Given how large an area these plants can envelop, controlling invasive plants can be a meticulous process, but it is the best way to ensure that these plants aren't able to spread further into the park. Road sides are another area of focus as they create literal highways for invasive plant species to take hold. By controlling invasive plants near the park boundary and along roadside, park biologists hope to reduce the amount of species entering and spreading in order to protect and maintain the natural state of the park.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers turning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is. And what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state maritime museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mir's, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mir's Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent.
He just wants to meet with you individually.
Separately.
Oh, separately, okay.
All right, we're back in. It is 2:58 on Wednesday, January 23rd. Coming out of executive session and this board will proceed as discussed in executive session. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
And I would appreciate if I could go first on that?
Absolutely.
Because I've got some other obligations. Okay, that's fine.